Good evening and welcome to the Burbank City Council meeting on Tuesday, February 4, 2020. I'd like to invite Pastor Cliff Rubin from Spirit Works Burbank to lead us in the invocation and flag salute. Will everyone please stand and remain standing for the flag salute?
There is only one, one power, one presence. There is only one universal force flowing through and as absolutely everything. And I know that this divine essence, this love, this light is flowing through this council this very night, that these good people who come together to do the good work of Burbank come with an open heart and open mind, knowing that the highest and best is what goes forth from this chamber. And I am so grateful for the people who give of their love and their light this day, as we all say together, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Assistant City Clerk, please conduct the roll call. Councilmember Gabe Letty.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Telemontes.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Springer.
Here. We have two announcements this evening. There is a new tenant protection law in California as of January 1. AB 1482 limits rent increases and evictions for certain residential rental properties in Burbank and across the state. You are invited to attend a workshop on Monday, February 24, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to learn more. The workshop will be held at the Community Services Building. That's 150 North 3rd Street, Room 104. Call 800-477-5977, Extension 1104, to reserve your spot. Space is limited. More information on the workshop and the new law can be found on the city's website The city clerk's office is currently accepting applications for an unexpired term on the Board of Library Trustees. The deadline to apply is Friday, February 28, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. For more information, please contact the city clerk's office at 818-238-5851, or visit the city website at www.burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. For our first presentation this evening, I would like to invite Mr. Sean Aquino, Board President for the Kids Community Dental Clinic in Burbank, to join me at the podium to receive a proclamation in recognition of National Children's Dental Health Month. The City of Burbank proclaims National Children's Dental Health Month, whereas in 1949, the American Dental Association proclaimed February 8 as National Children's Dental Health Day, which was extended to a month-long recognition in 1981. And the Kids Community Dental Clinic of Burbank evolved out of a need to fill a crucial gap in oral health care services for children of low-income families. And their mission is to provide affordable, quality dental care and preventive education for children of the working poor in an environment conducive to promoting good health. And chronic dental problems can lead to difficulty in eating, speaking, and concentrating, and serious tooth decay is an infectious disease for which there is no immunization. And whereas routine dental examinations uncover problems that can be treated in the early stages when damage is minimal and restorations may be small. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Springer, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim February 2020 as National Children's Dental Health Month, and encourage the citizens of Burbank to brush and floss daily, eat healthy foods, drink lots of water, and take their children to the dentist on a regular basis to prevent dental disease. And I thank the dedicated volunteers who serve the public at the Kids Community Dental Clinic here in Burbank. Thank you.
Just like to take the opportunity to thank you for shining a light and spreading the awareness about children's oral health. It's foundational. It's something that everyone, you know, from a very early age, it's, like I said, it's foundational, something that should be life for the rest of their life to, you know, floss, brush, drink plenty of water, go to the dentist twice a year. But a lot of the kids in the community, you know, don't have that opportunity to receive that educational basis, and we provide that for them throughout the community. And that's due to the support of the City Council, various city departments, the Burbank Unified School District, and other local schools that help bring children to our clinic. And with that, they're able to, you know, overcome some of the insecurities they have and have a life that, you know, to allow them to be the best that they could be. And the smiles actually, you know, make a big part, have a big part in that. So thank you so much for that support. We, you know, we have over 1,800 active patients. We gain about 40 every month, and we do over 8,000 screenings a year, just right here in Burbank and surrounding communities. So again, thank you so very much. I'd like to bring our Executive Director Dale Gorman up as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. In honor of this National Children's Dental Health Month, we are throwing our doors open again to the public for free exams, treatment, and sealants. So that's open to anyone who's interested up to age 18. And we are also traveling this month to Washington Elementary Boroughs and Burbank High Career Fairs, and then in March to Providenceia and Disney Elementary Schools for in-depth education on brushing, flossing, how to take care of your teeth, dental exams, and free toothbrush goodie bags. We appreciate this recognition because dental care is often ignored as part of overall health care, and so we want to bring this awareness to everyone. So thank you for this recognition this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no notable events to report tonight.
Thank you. We have one presentation to counsel this evening. I would like to invite Ms. Christine Ellis to introduce our next speaker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Christine Ellis, Analyst with the City Manager's Office. Tonight's presentation is an update from our state advocacy firm, Emanuel's Jones and Associates. David Jones and Kira Ross have been meeting with department heads today to discuss state legislation that may impact the City of Burbank. I would like to invite Mr. David Jones and Ms. Kira Ross to please present the update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. And Christine, that was a nice introduction for us. I would like to reiterate how great the meetings we had with your staff, and we met with all your department heads today, and got a lot of good information, a lot of good ideas. So we're off to a good start. We're going to split this up between Kira and I. I'm going to give you kind of a brief overview of looking back, a couple of highlights, and then Kira's going to give you the substance of what we're talking about with most of the legislation. So to recap, there were 2,625 bills introduced last year, which is, I agree with many, it was way too many. Over 1,042 made it to the Governor's Desk. He signed 870, that most of them became effective January 1, and vetoed 172. So we vetoed about 17% of the bills, which is slightly more than Jerry Brown did. One of the vetoes that we were very disappointed in, and I think later you'll have a little discussion about redevelopment, return, one of the bills was SB 5, which was by Senator Portantino and Senator Bell and others. So he vetoed that bill, and his veto message was, "I don't necessarily disagree with the terms of the bill, but it should be part of the budget." So Governor's Budget comes up January 10. The money is not in there, so we're going to have to fight and struggle for that. This is the start of a second year of the session, so the legislators have until February 21st to reintroduce bills, and Senator Portantino and Senator Bell put in a return of SB 5. So that's SB 795, which we will be following and watching. Most of the major intrusions last year into local control, many of them were shelved, neutered, or watered down quite a bit. One of the big ones, SB 50, was waylaid by Senator Portantino, and so that was very, very helpful to us. As you probably followed the news, SB 50 had to get out of the House of origin, so the Senate, by the end of last month, and it didn't make it. It fell three votes short. So just like Senator Bell and Portantino put in their bill again, Senator Weiner, the author of SB 50, put in SB 902. So he's going to continue that debate and that discussion. He's undeterred by the loss of that bill. As I mentioned, we'll have a bunch of bills introduced by February 21st. That's the deadline. Brand-new bills can be born. We're guessing there's probably about 1,000, 1,500 new bills that are going to be coming our way on top of the 2,600 from last year. So stay tuned. With that, I'm going to let Kira give you a rundown of what's there, and then I'll give you a brief look at what's coming up for this next year.
Good evening. So I'm going to focus a little bit on housing. It's just been such a central piece of legislation over the last couple of years that we wanted to kind of talk about, a little bit of what happened last year, what happened in the last week, and then what we see going forward on the issue. Last year, along with the Governor's goal of 3.5 million new units by 2025, we saw a number of new housing policies and changes. One of those was SB 330, which declares a statewide housing crisis and for a five-year period freezes nearly all development-related fees once a developer submits their preliminary application. We also saw AB 1763, which greatly expands, excuse me, greatly expands the existing density bonus law by requiring at the request of a developer, for 100% affordable housing projects in a city or county can get up to an 80% density bonus and four incentives. There were also multiple bills signed that amended various portions of laws pertaining to accessory dwelling units, which I think you've talked a lot about at council. The laws make it significantly easier to put an ADU or a junior ADU or both on a single lot, along with requiring the city to amend its existing ordinances and lowers the fees for ADUs. This year, two identical bills, AB 953 by Assemblyman Ting and SB 773 by Ms. Skinner, have been introduced that are cleanups to those ADU bills, and they're literally technical changes that really implement changes that were already thought to have occurred, but we're just clarifying those in the law. Those two bills have quickly gone through the legislative process in the last month. They went on consent calendar, and they likely will not change as the year goes forward. That said, we've had conversations with leadership and with the authors' offices, and while we are being told by leadership in the legislature that they are not interested in changes to ADU laws, other than those three cleanups that I just mentioned, this year, they are open to, and there are discussions beginning to happen, about changes to ADU laws and looking at some of the issues from this last round of ADU bills over the next year or two. So we probably won't see anything right away, but I think in the longer term, over the next six months to a year, we may see them coming forward. In addition to the regular legislative path, AB 101, which was a budget trailer bill last year, that attempts to increase housing production by doing four main things. It provided $2.5 billion in funding to address California's housing and homelessness crisis, and that includes about $500 million for infrastructure grants that are just about ready to go out. They just have the applications for those up on HCD's website. It also establishes incentives to encourage cities and counties to increase housing production. It establishes a process for the court to determine that a city or county has complied with housing element law. And it imposes penalties as a last resort if cities and counties disregard the direction of the court and continue to not fulfill their responsibilities under housing element law. And finally, as David mentioned, SB 50. SB 50 and SB 4, which is by Senator McGuire, both emerged as the early lead bills on housing production last year. Both bills stalled out in the First House, but not before Senator McGuire agreed to hold his SB 4 and add a couple of provisions, one of which was the fourplex provision in SB 50, merge that with SB 50, and allow SB 50 to go forward. Last year, SB 50 was ultimately stopped in Senate Appropriations Committee by Senator Portantino. And then, as you can do with a two-year bill, they brought it back in January, made a number of amendments, including a new amendment that would allow new local flexibility component. And then that bill was removed by the Senate Pro Tem Atkins from the Appropriations Committee, sent directly to the floor for a vote. And after the first day it was taken up, they had about a two-and-a-half-hour caucus and about three more hours of working it on the floor, and it failed on an 18 to 15 vote. It needed 21 votes. They brought it back on reconsideration the second day, after about four or five hours of more lobbying. It still failed on an 18 to 15 vote. There was a number of different reasons for the failure of the bill. There were both some affordable housing advocates that didn't agree with it. There's some low equity advocates, the Western Center on Law and Poverty, which was one whole branch that had been trying to work on putting affordable housing and other issues into that bill. On the other side, you had a number of communities that felt like they really wanted the single-family communities to stay as they are or have the changes be different. There was opposition from local government about a number of the different provisions within that bill. As David said, Senator Weiner has already reintroduced a new version, and that's SB 902. And it's important to note that Senate Pro Tem Atkins and Governor Newsom have both commented on the need for a housing production bill to pass this year. And that's really critical, because we think that there will be another bill, whether it's SB 902, or it's one of the other bills, or something that we haven't seen yet. We do believe we will see a housing production bill, and there will be a lot of push from both the Senate Pro Tem, and we also think that the Governor may ultimately intervene and try to help on this. The League of Cities Board is voting next week on a proposal that would, if it would pass, it could potentially be an alternative to the SB 50 language that we've seen in the past, so that will be something that potentially is out there. And there are also a couple of two-year bills that are already in the process that may play a role in the discussion surrounding housing production this year. And I'll just mention them and also let you know that we had good discussions with your staff earlier today about these bills, and they are already taking a look at them. So AB 725 by Assemblymember Wicks is a bill that requires at least 25% of a jurisdiction's share of the regional housing need for both moderate-income and above-moderate-income housing to be allocated to sites with zoning that allows at least two units of housing, but no more than 35 units per acre. She's calling this the missing middle. So she's going after sort of that middle-class housing that she thinks does not exist. That bill is just in the Senate. It just passed out last week, so it's just starting the process in the Senate. It likely will not be acted on until midsummer sometime, so there's some time to look at it, and your staff have been looking at it already. The other one is AB 1279 by Assemblymember Bloom, and this is a two-year bill that was held in the Senate Housing Committee last year, which of course is chaired by Senator Weiner. And it requires that a housing development project that meets certain criteria that are laid out in the bill, in a high-resource area, which is an area that is defined as having a high number of jobs and very good quality schools and resources in their area, they must allow use by right for some projects that meet the criteria. So that's another one that we are watching very closely. We're going to see SB, you know, the reintroduction with 902, but we also think there's some other bills that are very important to be watching. Finally, between now and the February 21st new bill introduction deadline, that is expected to produce nearly 2,000 new bills between now and then, we expect to see a number of new bills on housing production. So the discussion is going to continue. There's going to be a lot of discussion on housing production, and Senator Weiner's going to have to figure out, if he brings that language back, what kind of changes and what could potentially pass. That will be a lot of discussion going forward in the next couple of months.
And with that...
Okay. I will give you kind of a lay of the land of what we're going to be seeing the rest of this year. SB 50, of course, or 902 will be an awful lot of our attention. Looking to the wildfire issue is going to be very robust. The Governor included a lot of money for wildfire deployment, more resources for wildfire. The Governor also in his budget included what he called a resiliency bond, $4.75 billion to deal with climate change, sea level rise, hardening of houses in fire areas. So the rumors in the building is that number is going to decline. The Senate's got a bill number, SB 45 is their version. That number is already to $5.5 billion, and so it's a bit higher than the Governor's number. We expect to have an assembly version, so we'll have three different competing versions of a resiliency bond, and the rumors in the building is it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $7 billion. So that will be potentially an opportunity for those, for projects that we may have that would deal with climate change and resiliency for us there. PG&E bankruptcy, we mentioned before. Senator Weiner wants to take over PG&E and make it a public utility of some variety, so that will be a lot of the discussions of dealing with that, public power shut-off, emergency shut-offs, we'll deal with that. And then looking to the November ballot, we'll have the repeal of AB 5 will be on the ballot. This is the Uber and Lyft Dynamex decision, so the Uber and Lyft people and the Grubhub people have put together $90 million to try to repeal that in November. So that is going to qualify for the November ballot, so that will be fun and games for the November ballot, as well as the police chiefs and the grocers have a ballot initiative that will be there, that I think might be part of your platform to support. Turning back some of the Prop 47 leniency and the shoplifting, DNA testing, and date rape drugs would make them, again, punishable more severely. Split role, there is going to qualify for the November ballot, a different taxation treatment for commercial properties, not residential properties, so it exempt all residential properties, including apartment complexes, wouldn't be re-taxed, but all commercial properties would be reevaluated on a yearly basis based on market value. And they exempt out properties of below $3 million. So the estimate would be that it would result in an additional $15 billion for those people that get property tax, which are schools, cities, and counties, and special districts. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Council, questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Getting back to the split role tax, knowing that California and its motion picture industry, the studios, they're always challenged, especially if, you know, we've had, what, now 11 years of a robust, you know, stock market. They say after seven to 10 years, you know, it's going to readjust again. With this split role tax, is there any exemptions for the studios, looking at that we're always trying to keep filming and production within the state of California? Nothing? They're going to be...
Not that I have seen, from the language I've seen. It's any business that's worth more than $3 million, which the studios generally are, would have their property reassessed on a yearly basis.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gabe Letty.
What's the, is there any difference between SB 902 and SB 50?
I think, yes, there is. SB 50 was much more definitive and had a lot of definitions in it. 902 is much more of a spot bill, so it's more of a placeholder to start the talk about what's going to be in a housing production bill. So it's not identical.
Because I noticed in Weiner's message after the defeat of SB 50, and even during the discussion on SB 50, the senators spent a great deal of time talking about how it was just oriented to transit. And I found that that was not true at all. So I know that we have discussed in our council that we think housing and transit are natural partners, but the idea that housing, say, near our Magnolia Power Plant, which is, has its own rate of hazard, but a lot of jobs, is not an appropriate location. So I wondered if there had been any further discussion about redefining this "jobs rich" as, say, "jobs accessible," where you can get to transit and get on and get to work.
I think there certainly will be a lot more robust discussion about what is appropriate for "jobs rich" and where the location would be. Certainly, the fourplex portion of the SB 50 would have impacted residential, single-family neighborhoods of allowing fourplexes in single-family neighborhoods. So that clearly was not a transit-oriented piece, so it's clearly going after resident, regular, single-family neighborhoods. But my sense from the defeat of SB 50, Senator Weiner is going to have to have many, many more discussions and dialogues about what's an appropriate definition, because clearly the version of SB 50 that was on the floor failed twice after an awful lot of political muscle was used to try to get it across. And so he's going to have to rethink what it's going to be crafted as.
With respect to the ADU clarifying bills, SB 773 and 933, I think you mentioned it, Kira, but maybe you can clarify it again. I've had at least a brief conversation with our Assemblymember, who is going to send Ting a letter asking for a modification on FAR, and would he even entertain something like that through his bill?
He might. I think, I've had conversations with his staff, and we've also had conversations with leadership staff. At this point, they have been very close to taking any changes to those two bills. That said, it's different when a member is, you know, if a member is coming and asking if they're asked by multiple members to take on something. I wouldn't say no right out. I do know that they are trying to limit it to really technical changes. I think we need to find out whether, you know, with that, the FAR question that I think we talked to your staff about today, whether that piece comes up as truly in that technical range, and if their acceptance of it, if they're accepting of it. It certainly is worth asking, and it certainly is worth having Assemblymembers and legislative members ask for that.
Otherwise, you're saying that you have an expectation that new bills will be introduced to provide some restoration of sensibility to the currently-chapered ADU ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, I think two things will happen. I think the authors, the four authors that are of the two bills, so the Assembly bill has the three authors of the bills from last year, so Ting, Wykowski, and Bloom, and then the Senate bill is Skinner. I think those authors don't want to do anything else this year, except for the three changes that are in the two bills moving right now. The leadership has said they don't want a whole lot more. I think we will see some bills that will be introduced in the next month before the February 21st deadline that will be brand-new. And I think there is a discussion for some changes going forward. What changes they're willing to take is another discussion. I think that they, as I understand it, the authors and the leadership both understand that there are a number of issues with the ADU laws that have just passed, and that there needs to be discussion about some of the issues that are coming up. What they've not said is exactly what they'll take into the bills or exactly what they're willing to change, and that's another, sort of another discussion. And when that happens is, I think, also up for discussion. I think if you ask the leadership right now, and if you ask the authors of the bills, they don't want it to happen this year. I think we'll see some bills introduced. Whether or not they can stop that is another, sort of another discussion.
One of my frustrations, and it's Sher... One of my frustrations, and it's shared by council members, is that these bills seem to be advocated by Northern California, and continue to be advocated by Northern California principally, except for Bloom, he's West Side, but not really talking to the San Gabriel Valley, the Gateway Cities, cities like ours, and the city of San Fernando, to get a perspective that's more reflective of what goes on in an entirely different geography in Southern California. And it's just been such a frustration that we have not had our place at the table. We'll be talking about that later tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one thing I'd mention is, if you looked at the no votes on SB 50, if you looked at the no votes from SB 50, the majority of the no votes were from Democrats from Los Angeles.
Oh, yes.
So Hertzberg, Portantino, Allen, you know, you had a lot of, your delegation voted against the bill. So I think the Southern California voice was heard.
Has there been any discussion in Sacramento about, in addition to the reintroduced bill by Bell and Portantino, about affording other kinds of financial incentives for the possibility of, say, tenants to be able to buy the apartment building they live in, or some kind of means of assisting tenants in that manner, and frankly, assisting property owners who are willing to sell? Anything like that as part of the toolbox?
I haven't seen anything, but we have till February 21st to see what's coming out. So I anticipate there will be more strong tenant-oriented legislation, but I haven't seen it, nothing pops up to mind right now from what I've seen so far.
Okay. And then the final question I had, if I may ask one more, Madam Mayor. So who gets the money from a bond for resiliency? How is that money secured by cities? Or does it go to counties, and then we have to go to counties to secure the money for us? And I ask that question most sincerely because the governor in his, the introduction of his budget said he wanted to have regional directors in each county for homelessness purposes. And I'm thinking, it's like another layer, and we're trying to get to the solutions. So what about resiliency?
So from what I've read, and this, we're really early in the climate resiliency bond, there's going to be actually three versions right now. This kind of money is, it's a breakdown, if I remember it correctly off the top of my head, it's about 80% is going to go towards major issues, so sea level rise and wildfires and some of the major climate resiliency issues, and 20% breaks out to some of the other, I wouldn't say lesser issues, but sort of second tier, as opposed to the ones that people are viewing as very urgent. Most of these funds will likely run through existing grant programs and existing programs today. The fastest way they can get that money out is to run it through, you know, wildfire dollars run through CAL FIRE, run sea level rise through, it's probably DWR, Cal EPA. You run, you know, recycled water dollars, that there's some in there, would run through probably DWR. So it's running it through the Associated Agency, through an existing program that is out there today, which is what they've done with environmental bonds in the past, so park bonds, water bonds, other things, to get it out faster, so that if they don't do that, then they have to totally reinvent. Those programs, depending on the program and depending on the dollars, can either be a direct grant or direct allocation to a city, or to a regional body, or it really depends on where, what kind of dollars they are and where they've run in the past. So if you're looking at, for instance, some of the water dollars, probably would run through your regional water, you know, regional water bodies. It might be, though, for some of the wildfire dollars, if you're talking about vegetation management, or some of the home hardening dollars, those might run directly to a city fire department, or they might run directly to a homeowner to do home hardening in a high-fire severity zone, so that they can do some kind of work through state insurance agency, or state insurance department. It really depends on the actual dollars and how they've set it up, and the language in the, yeah, and the language in the bond. So we have to look to each pot of dollars and see what, where it's going, what department or agency, and how they're going to send it out.
And then the housing money that the governor said has made, I guess in his budget, over a billion dollars made available?
Mm-hmm.
And how does our nonprofit housing corporation secure some of that funding so they can continue to do the work that they've done in Burbank for a very long time? And that is, buy distressed properties, redo them, give the tenants right of return, it's not a gentrifying technique, it's a technique that maintains the stability of the neighborhood. How do we get our hands on that kind of money? How does our city, our nonprofit housing corporation?
Three entities got money directly from that governor's budget. One was cities, and the bulk of the money went to the 13 largest cities.
It's what?
13 largest cities got a direct allocation, so they got
So we're not part of that.
$275 million. The continuums of care, so if your housing agency here is a COC, they would get a direct allocation, and then the counties got a large chunk of money. So those were the three entities that got direct allocations.
So if our nonprofit, for example, wanted to purchase a distressed motel and modify it, create a transitional housing, and maybe even add a second floor to it, they would still have to, they couldn't go directly to the state, there's no funding allocated to us, they would have to compete through the county.
Most likely.
And then we'd have to find out where those dollars reside within the county.
Yep.
Okay, that's never encouraging. You know, I look for opportunities where the state would recognize that nonprofit housing developers are able to build housing, not necessarily a lot cheaper, but they don't have the same profit motive that for-profit developers have, and in some ways, serve cities much better. I think that is all my questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here. Welcome to Burbank.
Lovely to be here.
Now, you mentioned about the votes being mostly from, obviously from our area, against. There were several that didn't vote.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know and why? I mean, obviously, they would know why, but is there any reasoning for that?
It's different for every member. You know, one of the Republicans, Shannon Grove, was not actually there. She was in route from Washington, DC, coming back. I know Mr. Umberg had tremendous pressure locally and just chose to stay off the bill.
Mr. Archuleta.
Archuleta in Bradford?
Yeah.
Yep.
Because I was watching the session.
Yeah.
I saw Archuleta right up front at his desk.
Yeah.
He was there.
He was there the entire time. And Bradford did say some, had some remarks that were relatively negative about the bill, and then he did not vote.
Because he's in the appropriations. He was focused, he was targeted.
Yeah.
It's kind of a swing vote.
Yeah.
About a ling ling.
Champ.
Yeah.
Diamond bar.
I don't know her exact reason. She may have a race. Sometimes if they have a big race coming up, they will stay off the bill.
Because I saw her there as well.
Sorry. Yeah.
Okay. Talk to Mike. The difference between a cleanup and a makeup, cleanup and changes, you know, we're talking about, they're only allowing the cleanups to go through.
Right. Cleanups, so, I'm kind of speaking, yeah, speaking in legislative terms here. Typically, a cleanup bill is a technical bill, so it's not going to change policy. So in this case, one of the changes is grammatical. A second change, I'm blanking on
One of the cleanups, you mean?
Yeah, the cleanup. So typically, those are bills where they're changing the language in the bill to clarify the, in the case of this bill, one of the changes is to clarify that if the city or county or local agency doesn't act on an ADU application within 60 days, it automatically goes forward. The language was written in such a way that most people were interpreting it that way, but it was not absolutely clear in the law, so the change is just making it abundantly clear that that is the intent of the law. So that's the kind of change as a cleanup bill. So when they have, when you have a bill like that, and you're running a bill that's purely cleanup, you typically don't want to bring in other issues that would pull it off of a consent calendar, which is already getting everybody in agreement, and it might make it more controversial. It doesn't mean that they won't add changes, it's just mean that we're going to have to pass a bar that everybody agrees this is not a big deal of a change, and everybody is okay with it, because they don't want to stop the momentum of the bill. And so when I talked about the question on FAR changes, there is a bar that we'll have to meet, so we need to, we need to really think about and talk to people and figure out, okay, is this going to be okay? Is the author okay with it? Is the other side, is the Republicans okay with it? Are we going to run into any questions or challenges? So there's some work on our end to figure that out. And if not, then we have to either look to another bill, or look down the line for opportunities to make changes.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah.
There's mud. Now, you mentioned the California cities, the board is going to be taking up a discussion.
Yeah.
Now, do you know if that came from the LA Division? Because I know the LA Division submitted a white paper with a lot of recommendations, because Sacramento doesn't want us to say no. Come up with some solutions as well that we can work and put on the table.
I actually don't know if that was from the LA Division. I actually have not seen the actual language. I had a quick conversation with Jason yesterday about it, but I don't know the genesis of the language.
Because I know the president, Juan Garcia, met with Carolyn and John last week to discuss that. So, okay, so you didn't know if that was
Yeah, I didn't know.
Sure. Okay. What about Bloom's bill? Can we go over to Santa Monica and talk to Richard?
It's not a bad idea. I mean, it's worth talking to him. I think, you know, his bill is a push. It's the sponsors of that bill are the Western Center on Law and Poverty, and, do you remember the other sponsor? What they are trying to, they're looking very specifically at communities that have high jobs and high resources. So good schools, good, stable communities where they want to get multifamily homes into these communities, so that people that need affordable housing can have access to the jobs and to the schools and everything else. It was very controversial when it emerged last year. There were a lot of people that had a lot of problems with that bill. It sort of fell off to the side when SB 50 and 4 and 330 took off, because it was sort of an underlayer, underling bill, and it got held in Senate Housing. I don't know, you know, I mean, it's obviously in the mix of discussions at this point going forward. I think had 50 gone forward, I think this bill just would have died off, honestly. But it, because 50 now is sort of stalled out again, and it needs, that discussion needs to happen, and people are looking at what is the full scope of housing production ideas, this one's back in the hopper. And part of the reason we've highlighted is just because it is a bill that could potentially have dramatic effect here.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and we'll see you back in Sacramento.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll wait after Ms. Y.
Yes. Sure. Councilmember Gabelletti.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
On that housing, you know, what you just said right now, job-rich communities, better-resourced schools, it seems like, and maybe you've heard it from other cities that you represent, but it seems like they're destroying our quality of life by taking away our local control, when the reality is, you know, you've got San Bernardino County, you've got Riverside County, Victorville communities out there that can afford, that would have this type of development out there and build jobs out there versus Burbank, Santa Mon, I mean, just the LA region of the 88 independent cities within this county. Is there any conversation up in Sacramento? I mean, because it seems like there's a big push now, and I don't know if other cities are getting grumpy, because I am, but the bottom line is, if you're going to be doing these mandates and destroying our local neighborhoods for what it's worth, is there any conversation about giving money and control to local cities? Because we'd be a better steward of state money to really develop better neighborhoods, better development, versus taking our by rights and having a developer say, well, you know what, I know the rule now, if I just do what the state wants, I'm going to get up to 80% density, but meanwhile, the recipients that were disturbing their communities, we can't really represent them and protect them, because the by rights are going away. Is there any kind of sea growing with that?
So in SB 50, and the amendments that came out, I think on January 6th, so the January amendments contained a new section of that bill, and it was called the Local Flexibility Section. The theory behind that, and I'll say theory, because in practice, when we had folks look at it, by and large, everyone said it won't work. But the theory behind that section was to say, hey, if a local government, if a city or county is going to, is already on the path of doing housing with their housing element, and that they can meet their housing element, and they can meet their RENA, then they can use those documents and to get out of SB 50, to basically be exempt. And the theory was, if you can do it better on your own, and you can show us with your various documents that you're doing this, then you don't need to be affected by SB 50. The challenge, and why that was sort of pretty soundly rejected, was that in, when people started looking at it, especially planners, and they would look at it and say, we can't meet this, the timelines don't work, if you had to start and actually start your, if you're not already doing your update for your sixth cycle for your housing element today, there was no way the timelines were going to work. And so it was too difficult. But at least the good part of that was that the discussion was there, that Senator Weiner was recognizing that communities were saying, you got to let us do this. I mean, it's one thing to set a goal, it's another thing to tell us how to do it, to take our rights away, and to take our local control. So that, you know, whether or not that piece comes back in some form as part of the discussion, it's, that's an important piece, and it's important to have that ability to have some local flexibility to determine, as we do today, what our communities are going to look like, and preserve what we want our communities to look like.
And then my final point, just one point, is, is there conversations by what Sacramento and their mandates, and taking away our local control, has there been any discussion about independent charter cities that have via the charter, through statute, that we have jurisdiction over our land use within, like Burbank, 17 square miles? But it seems like there's a constant conflict now between the mandates that's taking, is there any legal scholars kind of exploring this outside of our top lawyer here in Burbank? I mean, from the different cities you are representing up in Sacramento, because it seems like we're right at that gray area.
There are legal challenges going on right now to charter city authority, and so those are being sorted out through the courts. And so, but that, I mean, we firmly believe that charter cities have absolute control over your land use, and clearly, that's been muddled quite a bit. So, so efforts to retain and restore charter city authority, you know, that could emerge, but, but right now, I think it's a mix between court decisions and, and, you know, where those court decisions stand.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Gabelletti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. George Geltan had an article in the LA Times, it was his take on the failure of SB 50 and the failure of cities to do their part. One of the very telling things he wrote about was someone from the building industry saying there are 500,000 units, 500,000 units that are entitled, but are not under construction. Now, the spokesman said it's because the fees that cities require are too high. So if there is, if there are 500,000 units ready to go, entitled, it's done, the neighborhood arguments are over, the project is permitted, what is Sacramento, what are the legislators doing, what's anybody doing to look at what the barriers are, what barriers need to be cleared, so that construction can begin on those units?
Well, we have, we have continued to say, we've gotten to the point of housing, making housing happen, has gotten the bad Venn diagram of, nobody wants to spend any money until this governor stepped up and spent some money, and the only thing we can do is to take out local control and make it cheaper. So we continue to be in that bad Venn diagram, where the only thing that they've been looking at is removing local control. We've been saying for a number of years that the other, the other element is the developers and the land speculators, people that have entitlements that aren't building. And the question should be, why? Why aren't you building?
That's the question.
And we can't, and we can't make somebody spend their money to build things, but I think that that's a very good question. We've been saying it for years. Oakland has an ordinance about people who are land banking in Oakland. They've got a five-year look at people, if you haven't developed your parcel of land that's zoned for residential, there's consequences. So I think that discussion, I think, deserves more robust attention, because we continue to go down the same path of, let's eviscerate local control, let's not provide the ongoing funding that we need to make affordable housing happen, because it doesn't happen without a robust revenue stream to subsidize those units. And the one thing we can't control is what the private sector and the development community is doing, because they, and we can't tell them, go over here and pull this permit, build that there. So we're, I share your frustration that there's something that's wrong, that's not happening, and I think there should be more scrutiny paid by the legislature to the development community.
There should be a common sense conversation with the legislature about this, and I don't know where we go with it, counsel, but I think that we should consider having that discussion more often. There was an assembly person I was talking to, I don't know, maybe three, four, four, five months ago about this, and, and he said, but Emily, you know, it's your city, you need to you need to do it. And I said, we don't build the housing. We entitle it. And if, if it sits vacant for six years, it's not because the city failed to do anything and at the same time, we keep getting hammered and we, we all agree with the Vice Mayor at the loss of local control in order to build more, you know, in order to enable more units, but we don't get them. And developers don't fill our campaign coffers and we're not running for higher office. So I would really, we need to have a way to restore some practical sensibility to this discussion, especially when we hear from credible sources that there are half a million units that are waiting to be built. That's absurd. Not saying it to you directly, but I think as a practical matter, it is completely absurd. When we had redevelopment, we financed projects. So we had a stake in it and we made sure those projects got built, but we have no stake in this any longer, except through the public hearing process, through enabling the project, through going through our development approvals and we do it and then what? It's a disservice to tenants, it's a disservice to homeowners, it's a disservice to our communities and it just really isn't very practical in terms of looking at, at these other ambitious bills that, that really need to, to tackle this pent-up reserve of units already out there on the books. So I just wondered if the governor, in the wisdom of his budget, was looking at, you know, making it easier to write down the cost of development impact fees or using money in a different, a creative way so that developers would no longer be just, you know, waiting until the time is right, speculators.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your report. I have a question related to Councilmember Gabelletti's and, and what you hear about construction and labor costs and the half a million units that aren't going anywhere. Do you have a thought on construction and labor costs and how they relate to those unbuilt half million units?
Well, I, I think the talk in Sacramento is there are two elephants in the room and one is labor costs and the other is SEQA. So, these are two fairly significant impediments to getting affordable housing built. So, and there, that's another common sense discussion that should happen with the powers that be, that we should examine some of these issues and see if we can come to some sort of solution that we, everybody would give, that we could suddenly get, make those housing units in, in this area more affordable, not six hundred thousand a unit, if you could, if you could, and if you could get the assurance and the developers, maybe many of those units are tied up in SEQA, who knows, or if they're through the SEQA process, that's fine. But, but anyway, it's become a, a very big problem. And I think that, you know, every year we've had a bill that's introduced saying we give SEQA exemptions for sports teams and for stadiums, why don't we give it for affordable housing? And so that bill has not gone very far, but at least Senator Glazer from the Bay Area is pushing for that, for SEQA exemption. So, those discussions will continue.
Okay, and so the, the cleanup bills, they just don't include FAR or owner occupancy, nothing like that? Okay. And you mentioned AB five and how it would be, the repeal of it would be on the ballot in November? So, do, do they need signatures for that or you just feel like because they have ninety million dollars, they're going to get the signatures?
They, I believe they're going to get the signatures with ninety million dollars to spend and they're going to run a robust campaign. And, and they'll threaten that and they may cut, I mean, we've seen this where people threaten to do an initiative and then they come to the legislature and say, I'm going to put this on the ballot in November unless you want to cut a deal with me here and they can save their money. So, that, we've seen that happen by the soda industry and some others, to threaten an initiative and then come back to the legislature to say, if you give me this, I'll make my initiative go away. So, who knows? But, but ninety million is a pretty impressive number.
So, one could do that, like they could have all the signatures and?
And not turn them in.
And not, oh, not turn them in, but once they're turned in, it's done, it's on the ballot, right? Okay. Thank you. Well, one more question, any, any legislation on incentives for, for sale housing? Because there's a disincentive right now, what I hear, just talking with developers because of the ten-year warranty period on for sale housing, safer townhouses and condos.
Oh, like construction defect?
Right, yes.
I haven't seen any, there, there was a flurry of legislation back in the early two thousands, I haven't seen any of, on that subject matter that I, I can recall, but February twenty first, two notes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Got it? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
At this time, I would like to ask our city attorney to please report on closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Council met in closed session earlier this evening concerning its existing litigation, one matter under Government Code, Section fifty-four, nine fifty-six point nine, subsection D one, the case of Woods versus City of Burbank, a personal injury matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for general public comment. Please present a yellow general public comment card to the Assistant City Clerk if you wish to speak. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Comments are limited to three minutes. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help you keep track of how much time is left. I encourage you to state your name when speaking at the podium so that it can be included in the minutes. Our first speaker is Mr. Schlossman.
Good evening, everybody. Good job on your soapbox there, Ms. Gabelletti. Okay, Ms. Mayor, have you ever served on jury duty? Because the first thing, well, let me tell you, the first thing the judge will tell you, Mr. Murphy will validate this, is get, get both sides of the information before you make up your mind, because there's two sides to every story. And so often we're quick to make up our minds without getting all the information we should have. And I've attended the school board meetings for seven or eight months now. I've asked question after question, trying to get the information, begging for the information. And so often I'm ignored, I'm given, given conflicted information. And the voters, we can't make up, we don't have all the information to make up our mind on this thing. And it's really presented to us in such a way that we can't. The school board president wrote a commentary piece printed in the leader and it was over five hundred words. It was printed on the front page and it was printed unedited. I talked to the editor about it and I was invited to write two hundred and fifty words, subject to editing, on the back, back page. So, that's an example of how we're manipulated. This came in the mail today and it's, it says Burbank schools need you and there are six kids trying to read upside down, which I know they can't do. And there's no information in here, it's just rhetoric. And then if you do a little homework and you look and see where it came from, it says paid for by the Committee to Support Quality Teachers. But the address is the Burbank Teachers Association, that's the union. So, they're supporting this thing, duh, they're getting a big pay raise out of it, why wouldn't they support it? And I've asked the superintendent to educate us on how pay works, on how deferred compensation works. I've asked them to introduce agenda item so we can discuss it and, and tell us how things work so we can make an informed decision and it's silence, we're not told. It says leaders we trust support this measure, it says, and the first one is the Burbank Council PTA. I called Washington, they said we don't endorse these types of things. We, we recommend you don't endorse it and don't endorse candidates either, stay out of it, the PTA is, it's not their purpose. And then it goes on with a bunch of other people here who endorse this thing. Your name is there, Ms. Mayor. But it's just wrong that we, we're not presented with the information to make an informed decision. So have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Nolan, followed by Michael Morgan.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Mike Nolan. Number one, the response to the reason that some of those units haven't been built is cost, construction costs. You may or may not be aware of this, but quite a few of our tradespeople have moved out of California because their housing costs are so high and they've been able to find steady employment in places such as Texas. And by now, they've moved their wife and their children down there as of September and have them in school. So, the guys that used to hang four or five sections of drywall, that aren't here. Our construction costs, which this council has no control over, has a lot to do with that backlog, Madam Gabelletti, five hundred thousand units. It's the money. It just isn't there. There's a hope that things will ease up over the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days. But that's as of a conversation I had at Burger King Saturday, not my shopping cart survey. I want to talk to you about Adam Schiff. Now, I don't agree with Adam Schiff on his attitude about our president. However, I want you to know, and I feel obligated to tell you, that when I contacted his office with some problems involving the VA, I found his office very responsive and I feel his level of constituent work is not changed. And I, I've known Adam for a long time, long, long before he entered public life. And I would have to say, we can disagree regarding President Trump, but when it comes to his representation and his staff's representation of the constituency, I'd have to give him very, very high marks because of what he and his staff have done for me. And I really, really appreciate it. I would hope that as you go forward, and I love the questions you're asking tonight, I love the questions you asked of Senator Portentino, please continue what you're doing. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Morgan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. My name is Michael Morgan. I moved to Burbank when I was twelve years old to engage in a career as a professional actor. I'm still a SAG-AFTRA member and I want to say thank you for cultivating artistic and creative atmosphere here in Burbank that has served me for most of my life. After my video game, sorry, after my acting, I went into professional video game playing and I traveled around the world to several continents and worked constantly as a gamer and now I'm in a different field. But I want to speak to you really quickly tonight about esports and the future of esports in the city of Burbank and how this might actually present a creative solution to some of the questions you all have about housing. Imagine with me real quick the concept of mixed commercial and residential housing, which you have already experimented a bit with downtown, that, real quick, taking the city of Inglewood as an example, a lot of money is coming into the city of Inglewood because of their engagement with the sports community, which was actually mentioned tonight, the Clippers Stadium, Steve Ballmer, former CEO of Microsoft, and a lot of movement happening there. Similar problems, actually, you mentioned Santa Monica, but there's actually some similarities between Burbank and Inglewood to consider as well. What I would like to propose is two things. One is for this council to really think about how they can court esports, esports players and streamers to come to the city of Burbank as a media entertainment capital and to flourish here and how housing can fit into that. I'm also going to mention the Pasadena Media Center, which is on Los Robles in Pasadena. They provide one hundred and thirty-five square feet control rooms, two hundred and fifty-six square feet green rooms and a nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven square foot facility for anyone in the city of Pasadena to produce media. The fact that that exists in Pasadena and doesn't exist in Burbank was sort of interesting to me. Here's my thought. For as long as individuals are coming to the city of Burbank and are streaming professionally, that they would be considered for certain housing recommendations and accommodations which are almost like dorms rather than like a hotel, between a hotel and a residential commercial mix, that they stay here for as long as they're streaming and being successful in streaming, whether it's on the Twitch platform, YouTube or others, but that the city of Burbank thinks about the future of housing as how to build facilities to help with media production on a smaller scale, that that would be city-funded but also state-funded. And people like myself could have that experience, could cultivate their professional careers gamers, but also you could have money coming in both privately and publicly for funding for those types of facilities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have David Spell.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I wasn't going to speak at public comment, but I figured I'd check in on the status of making a return to public, final public auras. I don't know where you ended up on that, I kind of dropped off the council agendas myself, so I'm not sure I'm asking, where are we on that? I think it's crucial that we bring that, this back for people who are engaged in the community and want to correct themselves when they misspeak. I misspoke about the former mayor once and I didn't get a chance to correct myself. I think the public should have the final word and I'm not sure where we're at on that or if that was dropped earlier in the year, last year, but I'm, I'd like to know what's going on. I think that needs to make a return and I know there's dozens and dozens of people that agree with me. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any more comment cards?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public comments. Now is the time for a brief response from city council, the city manager and/or the city attorney. Any comments? Any? Yes, Councilmember Gabelletti.
This idea about a different kind of housing is intriguing. I don't know that we've ever thought about it before, so, thank you. And I'd like to thank the speaker for the, the good comments on our Congressman Adam Schiff.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and Mr. Spell, I will follow up and somebody will get back with you. Thank you. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam Assistant City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Item number one, adoption of a resolution approving budget amendments for bid schedule number one four two seven dash Interstate Five Arterial Improvement Project Phase Two, Metro MR three one zero point three eight, and bid schedule number one four two eight dash SR dash one three four, Arterial Improvement Project Phase Two, Metro MR three one zero dot, uh, point three one, and approval of city council meeting minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Talamontes and a second by Councilmember Murphy. Will the Assistant City Clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Talamontes. Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Gabelletti. Vice Mayor Frutos.
Yes.
Mayor Springer.
Yes. Tonight, we have one item under study session. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Beverly Wong from the Community Development Department to please present the next item. After staff's presentation, council will open the public comment period. Ms. Wong, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Springer and City Council. Beverly Wong, Administrative Analyst with the Community Development Department. Beverly Wong, Administrative Analyst with the Community Development Department. I am here tonight to provide the first of multiple presentations on development impact fees. Tonight, I will go over information on development impact fees, as well as provide an update on the status of the city's NEXA study. The presentation will provide general information, including state law governing development impact fees. Staff will also be seeking City Council input on policy direction and any follow-up questions that will guide future presentations, during which staff intends to provide a more in-depth analysis of existing and proposed fee levels and the potential effects new development impact fees may have on new development. Can we please pull up the slides? Thank you. During the last two years, the City Council has placed the development of new housing as a priority. You've seen this image before. The affordable housing crisis is a puzzle, with a number of different components that contribute to that puzzle. You have made great strides in moving forward to look at housing policies as part of that puzzle. As such, you have accepted the Affordable Housing Analysis and Strategy, and this has become the document staff refers back to as our guide when bringing you new housing policies and projects. Development impact fees and any proposed updates to the current program are also part of the larger housing policy discussion that seeks to balance the need for impact fees to be in line with new development's impact on the city's infrastructure and the critical need of addressing the jobs-to-housing imbalance. And that results in a variety of new housing types that are affordable to a mix of income levels and addressing the need for workforce housing, while also ensuring that we build and protect neighborhoods. Given tonight's policy considerations and keeping consistent with the city's affordable housing strategy, staff identified three suggested criteria to keep in mind throughout the discussion about the existing development impact fees and any proposed changes to the fee program. How should the city set impact fee levels to account for other city goals and policies, including the city's fee cost recovery policy, 12,000 units housing goal, and Burbank 2035 general plan compliance? Staff suggests that the city continue to align future development impact fees with the larger goals of facilitating housing production, retaining and protecting the growth of media production, office, and industrial sectors, ensure that new fees are consistent with city's fiscal policies, and maintain the city's market competitiveness within the regional job market with continued job growth. In charging development impact fees, how should the city balance different infrastructure needs while avoiding excessive fees that discourage new development? As noted in the staff report and the associated NEXA study, staff recommends a balanced approach to any changes to the impact fee program, where new development pays its fair share of the costs to city infrastructure, while not adversely impacting the financial feasibility of a project, or result in the loss of future growth opportunities in the previously mentioned industries that have made or are considering Burbank their home. How do development impact fee levels affect the city's efforts to facilitate other important development-related community benefits? As the city considers development impact fees, we also recommend a policy approach that continues to facilitate new developments that incorporate affordable and workforce housing, publicly accessible amenities, including open space, bike and pedestrian improvements, and addresses public services and neighborhood protection. Development impact fees, like other city policies, are only one piece of the larger puzzle that the city is reviewing to build neighborhoods and address housing needs, while also ensuring that new development of all types pays its fair share of infrastructure costs. During this first of multiple presentations, we will be discussing the following topics. What are development impact fees, or DIFs? What is the process that must be undertaken to update the current DIF program? What are our next steps based on City Council input on policy direction, and what additional information would the City Council like to see at a subsequent presentation? First, I would like to provide a brief introduction to development impact fees. State law, commonly known as AB 1600, allows cities to collect fees from new development projects to fund improvements that address their impacts to the city's infrastructure. In order to impose impact fees, the city must show that a reasonable connection or nexus exists between the impacts caused by new development and the capital improvements needed to address those impacts. Additionally, the fee charged to each project must be proportional to that project's share of the impact. Both these requirements are satisfied with the NEXA study. The NEXA study helps show the relationship between the new development being charged and the projects it is paying its fair share for. The city's current development impact fees were originally adopted in the early 1990s. While DIFs are an important revenue source for capital infrastructure, there are several limits and restrictions. They are collected and deposited into an account separate from the general fund. The funds can only be used to address needs from new development, not to address existing deficiencies. Additionally, revenue collected under impact fees can only be used for capital and infrastructure, specifically identified in the NEXA study. In other words, maintenance and operations cannot be paid with impact fees. DIFs alone cannot finance all of the city's infrastructure needs. DIFs are one of many types of capital funding tools the city uses to expand its infrastructure. And finally, impact fees are collected proportionally over time as new development occurs. This means that projects funded with DIFs are generally long-term projects that must be financed as development occurs and revenues are collected, and set aside to construct improvements. Overall, DIFs are restricted funds. The city adopted the current DIF ordinance in 1993, which established funding for libraries, parks, police, and fire, and transportation facilities through the use of impact fees imposed on new development. The fee was based on two studies. The Community Facility Study identified library, parks, police, and fire infrastructure needed to support new development, and a Transportation Study, called the Infrastructure Blueprint, identified a list of improvements needed to address transportation and traffic growth. Both studies forecasted growth under the city's general plan at the time, identified necessary infrastructure improvements needed to accommodate that growth, and calculated the maximum proportional fee that could be charged to development projects, so that each project paid its fair share of the costs to build the required improvements. The city of Burbank currently uses development impact fees to partially fund various transportation and community facility improvements from these two studies. The city currently charges the Community Facility DIF on all development, and the Transportation DIF is charged on non-residential development only. The fees are assessed on each new square foot of non-residential development constructed and on each new unit of residential development. The fees vary based on the relative level of impact each development type has on the city's infrastructure. The city's current fees are based on the original NEXA study used to justify the fee, and have risen each year based on a construction cost adjustment factor. With DIFs, the city's community facilities and transportation system have been able to grow to accommodate needs caused by new development. DIFs have contributed to the community through partially funding a variety of capital projects, including Overend Park facilities, Central Library Children's and Teens areas, Buena Vista Library improvements, library operating equipment, police and fire headquarters, intersection improvements, Interstate 5 Empire Interchange, Alameda North Neighborhood Protection Plan, and Burbank Channel Bike Way. Since its adoption, DIFs have been a useful funding tool for capital projects. As discussed earlier, the city's current DIFs are based on studies completed in the 1990s. The Impact Fee Program needs to be updated to reflect Burbank 2035 general plan growth forecasts. Since that time, several projects identified in the original study have either been built, evolved, or are ongoing, and impacts and development patterns have changed. Thus, staff believes an important part of the impact fee update is to revise the lists of infrastructure projects eligible for funding by DIFs. Because of these changes, staff undertook a comprehensive update to the city's DIF program and reviewed the infrastructure needed by the city to support the growth forecasts in the general plan. The city hired the consulting team of Economic and Planning Systems, EPS, and Faren Peers provided the transportation component to conduct a NEXA study to update the city's DIF program. As mentioned earlier, the NEXA study provides the city with a necessary technical documentation to support a DIF program update. The analysis provides a reasonable relationships and associated fee calculations to establish the maximum fee the city can charge for the facilities indicated pursuant to state law. As a reminder, the fees calculated by the study represent the highest fee levels that can be charged by the city based on the growth projections and the capital needs and corresponding costs needed to accommodate it. The maximum fee may not necessarily be supportable by current building or development costs, or might have negative effects. Nor do the maximum fees necessarily support other important city goals and objectives. The city may wish to adopt fees at or below these maximum NEXA-supported levels based on economic, policy, or other considerations. As part of the proposed updated DIF program, staff determined that the city's existing fee categories should be maintained, while proposing to add an information technology, or IT, fee to account for city infrastructure advancements and the reliance on technology. Because affordable housing production is an important city goal to address Burbank's high housing costs and severe jobs to housing imbalance, work is currently underway to study an affordable housing DIF on non-residential development to determine if the city can charge a fee to support new affordable housing for the local workforce. Staff will be returning to City Council at a future meeting to present the Affordable Housing Linkage Fee NEXA study findings. Now, I will provide a brief overview of the steps taken to develop the maximum fee amounts. Staff and consultants refer to the Burbank 2035 general plan, which is the blueprint for the future development of the city, to estimate existing and future population and employment. Each department then provided a list of new capital improvements needed to serve both existing and future residents and employees during the general plan horizon year. Staff and consultants developed cost estimates for the list of projected capital needs. The consultant then allocated the costs between existing and new development to determine the impact fees share. It is important to know that development impact fees cannot pay for existing demands and needs, only for the cost of new impacts. Therefore, the difference between existing and new development's share needs to be calculated. Then, the costs were further distributed among residential and non-residential uses. Based on this distribution, the cost per resident or employee was calculated, which provides a maximum fee that can be justified by the NEXA study. A 5% administrative fee is added to cover the cost of administering the program. Based on the NEXA study, the costs needed to fund capital facilities and equipment necessary to accommodate projected growth totaled approximately $38.5 million. Additionally, a projected $77.5 million in transportation improvements is needed to accommodate projected future impact supporting vehicle, transit, pedestrian, and bicycle modes as a result of new development. The analysis showed that DIFs could cover about 30% of the total improvements identified by each department to serve the city through 2035. Therefore, the city continues its efforts to find other revenue sources, such as grants or the general fund, to cover the remaining costs, as development impact fees is just one funding tool to address the city's capital and infrastructure needs. Based on this analysis, the city was able to identify the maximum levels that could be considered for community facilities and transportation fees. As discussed earlier, the NEXA study calculates the maximum allowed fees that can be justified under state law, based on infrastructure needs, expected growth, and existing deficiencies. The highest maximum fees do not mean they are the best fees. The updated maximum allowable fees calculated by the new NEXA study are, in some cases, significantly higher than the current fees. For these land uses, imposing the maximum fee would have dramatic and potentially significant negative effects on city goals and policies. Presented here are the maximum allowed fees based on the NEXA study. These are the residential maximum fees on a per-unit basis. And here are the non-residential maximum fees on a square foot and per-room basis. These maximums do not take into account other considerations the City Council should keep in mind when setting fees. These considerations include: How could revenue from impact fees offset other one-time and recurring revenue generated from development? How would development impact fee levels encourage appropriate development for the city, such as commercial office development versus housing? How do development impact fee levels relate to other important city goals? Because setting new fees can be complex, staff recommends the City Council direct staff to return with one or more case studies to illustrate how different fees could affect other goals, policies, and revenue sources. The City Council recently approved the Avion Burbank Commercial Development and the 777 North Front Street Residential Mixed Use Development, which can both provide good examples for comparing how new development impact fee levels would affect development projects versus the current fee schedule, especially when comparing impact fees to other revenue sources that have resulted through the negotiation of community benefits that are provided by new development projects. The benefits have included multimillion-dollar investments in new open space, long-term maintenance and development of facilities and public infrastructure, and developer funds for community improvements. When considering the appropriate DIF levels, the city should also consider how existing and future fee levels charge in Burbank compared to those of the city's neighbors. While each of the three cities charge DIFs on different land use types and collects funds for different infrastructure needs, a direct one-to-one comparison is not possible. But a comparison can be informative in showing how Burbank's current fees and new maximum allowable fees are relative to neighboring cities. Based on the comparison, Burbank currently charges less DIFs on residential development than both Glendale and Pasadena. Burbank's new maximum allowable fee for residential development is also lower among these two cities. The primary reason Glendale and Pasadena have higher fees is because they both include land acquisition costs to build new parks. For recent projects in Burbank's case, we have asked developers to build parks or open space directly, for example, the First Street Village project and the 777 North Front Street project. On the other hand, Burbank currently charges a comparable amount of DIF on non-residential development as compared to its neighbors, but could charge more than Glendale and Pasadena given the maximum fee identified in the new NEXA study. This is mostly due to the higher transportation fee that could be justified, given Burbank's status as a major job center, and consequently, the amount of commuter traffic that impacts Burbank's streets. In considering DIF fee levels, the City Council should also consider other methods the city has used to meet its infrastructure needs through new development. The most important alternative method is through the Planned Development Agreement, or PDDA, process, where the city negotiates with prospective developers for community benefits in exchange for project concessions. These benefits are oftentimes infrastructure improvements in the immediate area of the project that results in public amenities that are available at the time the project is built and have several advantages. These PDDA community benefits build and protect neighborhoods and do not require a NEXA study. The public improvement can be funded wholly by the development and constructed upfront as part of the construction of the new development, allowing the community to gain benefit from the improvements immediately. As discussed earlier, projects funded with impact fees are long-term projects that must be planned over time as development occurs and revenue is collected. Also, community benefits through the PDDA process are directly constructed by the developer without using city staff resources, and is oftentimes maintained on a long-term basis, covering thousands of dollars' worth of expenses ineligible for DIF funding. However, the ability for a private development project to fund both DIFs and community benefits is limited, so if the city increases DIFs, consequently, PDDA community benefits requests will need to decrease, or the project will become economically infeasible. Considering these factors, the city needs to find a balance between providing an appropriate level of infrastructure to new residents and businesses consistent with Burbank's goals, while avoiding excessive costs on development that impact other city goals, like building more housing with supporting public amenities, which in turn help build neighborhoods. Given the complexity of setting new DIF rates and how new fee levels impact other policies and revenue streams, staff recommends that the City Council direct staff to return with a more detailed analysis of different fee levels and their impacts on development projects, other funding sources, and current city policies. In particular, staff recommends the city consider the previously noted three DIF policies: Align fee levels with city goals; Balance fees with building neighborhoods; And facilitate community benefits that build neighborhoods. In other words, align updated DIF levels with the city's larger goals of facilitating housing production, retaining and protecting the vital job sectors in our cities; Ensure that new fees are consistent with city fiscal policies; And maintain the city's market competitiveness. Balance development's fair share fees, covering their impact on the city's infrastructure needs, while avoiding excessive fees that discourage new development. Keeping in mind, there's also the Affordable Housing NEXA study that will be coming to City Council at a later meeting. Facilitate new developments that incorporate community benefits, such as affordable and workforce housing, publicly accessible amenities, and addressing public services and neighborhood protection. DIFs, like other city policies, are only one piece of the larger puzzle that the city is reviewing to build neighborhoods and address housing needs, while also ensuring that new development of all types pays its fair share of infrastructure costs. A few other things to consider include pending state legislation that looks and addresses how fees constrain housing supply and affordability; Economic fluctuation: Development varies widely from year to year. Impact fee revenue will increase and decrease annually based on economic Impact fee revenue will increase and decrease annually based on economic and market conditions. And fees can always be updated. Impact fees can be reviewed regularly and can be updated with a nexus study as needed. Based on the information presented at tonight's study session and direction from city council, it is staff's intent to return to the city council with a more detailed analysis of different DIF levels, how those levels would relate to actual development projects through looking at Avion Burbank and 777 North Front Street development projects, and a comparison of the revenue expected to be raised through DIF to other revenues generated by development such as transient occupancy taxes, community benefits, and other revenue. Also, as part of this process, the city would ensure public outreach is conducted to both residents as well as the development community to communicate the proposed impact fee changes prior to consideration by the city council. After this process, and if directed by the city council, staff would return with a specific ordinance amending the municipal code to update the DIF program for adoption. Tonight, I am assisted by Assistant Community Development Directors David Krisky, Simone McFarland, and Fred Ramirez, who are also in attendance. Additionally, the consultant team of EPS and Fear and Peers are also here in the audience tonight. Both the staff and the consultants are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We will now open public comment to hear from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for a maximum time of three minutes. Please complete a green public comment card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Thank you. Our first speaker is David Spell.
Thank you. That was an excellent presentation. I did get a chance to look at the staff report and review some of this earlier today, and I just wanted to go over some of my takeaways from my perspective, and then I just had a couple of things to really just kind of plant a seed, maybe some questions that you could ask the staff. The current takeaways that I came up with were: our current fees are based on a study that was conducted in 1993, and it's been incrementally updated in the years since then. So yes, it's definitely time to review this ad nauseam. Our current fees are not in line with our neighboring cities, she said that. And in some cases, it's kind of striking, so just looking forward to some of the kind of apples-to-apples comparisons in the subsequent reports. Even the proposed maximum fee increases that are in the documentation are lower, still lower than what our neighboring cities for DIFs. Now, I know she also mentioned Plan Development Developer Agreements are your preferred method of raising funds, but my concern with that and the discrepancy between that 30/70 split is that those may not have a direct impact on the city as a whole, and it's only going to have an impact, you know, for example, Avion, it's going to have an impact over there, I'm assuming. Maybe they can let us know if it would have a citywide impact. So you're getting 70% of your kind of planned money out of developers for something that's just in that area where you're developing the project, as opposed to something that would benefit the city as a whole, like libraries, et cetera. So those are some of the takeaways. The question I would have: why is our proportional share of the DIFs so different from the neighboring cities? It's not just down to an amount, but the proportional share seems different. Let's see, I know we have to take linkage fees into account, I totally, I can't wait for that one, I'll be here for that one too. I want the public to note that in the documentation, it does say that the general fund makes up any differences in these projects where DIFs have a shortfall, either you get grants from the state or, you know, government, but the general fund, so our, you know, sales tax and all that stuff that goes in the general fund, that is what's paying for the difference there. So I think it's really time to make these adjustments and to be as aggressive as you can be. Obviously, you don't want to scare anybody away, but let's put it this way, these fees have been low, 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 low for a long time, and there's something going on other than our fee, you know, that fees aren't the problem, as it appears. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any more speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues? Ms. Wong, do you have responses back to Mr. Spell?
Yeah, I think a lot of what he brings up is in alignment with what we talked about, and then the policy part, we're really looking forward to your discussion and your guidance moving forward.
Okay, so you've noted those comments and those requests, so, okay. Thank you. Okay, so Councilmember Gavalaletti.
Yeah, thank you very much for your report. I agree that this has been a long time coming, and I'm also pleased to see that we're going to have additional study sessions on this, because it's a complicated issue, and taking one bite at a time seems like the right thing to do, and I know some residents couldn't make it tonight, so hopefully they'll be able to watch this. You know, talking about the nearby cities, I was very surprised to see that the DIF imposed in Pasadena is only for parks and recreation. And I was expecting to see an array of things, the way we have identified fire, police, parks and recreation, parks in Lou Library. So can you shed some light on Pasadena collecting only for parks in their city and not for transportation, and not for street improvements, and not for other things related to the whole operation of a city?
Yes, I will say that through looking at our neighbors in comparison to us, it really is, the fees really are set as a kind of, each city kind of tailors their individual needs for what is important. We have always had a broad array, as you mentioned, of different categories, I think, to keep the fee flexible to fund as much types of infrastructure as we can. It is interesting that even on something like transportation, which is, I think, a pretty basic infrastructure of the three cities, one city, Glendale, doesn't even charge transportation. And so I think it really is the city's, it's really up to the city, each city, to decide which infrastructure is important. We propose to maintain our current large array of improvements, because, like I said, it keeps the fee flexibility in terms of what you can spend it on. We tried to set a nexus for each of those categories to fund all of those improvements.
And speaking to our fee also being used on a citywide basis, which was raised by Mr. Spell, isn't it, don't our development impact fees go to fire and police, and to parks and recreation, and to the library? And is it restricted to one library, or, you know, one fire station? How is that?
No, our fees are not restricted for improvements that are, say, physically located near the developments that pay the fee. What is restricted is that the development only is required to pay its incremental share of the citywide service. So the 30/70 split, the new developments' impact represents only 30% of the total cost of the improvements we need. The other 70% is ostensibly supporting everybody who's already here, and so we can't use the DIFs to fund the improvements that help everybody who's already here, and that's why we have to find an alternative funding source to make the whole. And, you know, there's certain things, you can't build a third of a library, or a library that's only for a particular single development, you have to build, when you build a library, it serves everybody, and so you use the proportional split to make sure that the new development only pares for its new proportional share.
It also seems that on the transportation side of the fees, our fees are higher than the other two cities in nearly every category, and sometimes by quite a bit. Can you comment to that?
Yes. We are a very, as this council's talked about before, we are very jobs, housing, A, we're imbalanced in terms of we have so many more jobs than housing units, but also we are such a huge job center for the region that we also then accommodate so much more traffic by the jobs that locate here. With our current fee and with the proposed new fee, we have again tried to identify all transportation improvements that have some nexus to new development that occurs here, and then set that proportional share on as many projects as we can within our city infrastructure planning. And so we found that in the current fee over the many years that we've had it in place, our transportation fee being as robust as it is, has let us do lots of really good transportation improvements. We've been able to build an entire interchange with, supported by DIFs, we've been able to build all sorts of intersection improvements, bikeway improvements, and so we feel that with the new fee, is the max allowable based on all the improvements that we want to build over the next 20 or 30 years? The max allowable is high, that's the defensible upper limit, and that's why we need to come back to the other policy and city goals, because setting the highest fee in some cases is not really the best policy, we believe. There's going to have to be a discussion of where within that maximum range we want to set the fee, and particularly transportation is one of the high ones that we can justify through the nexus, but it may or may not make sense to charge that high amount in practice, and that's what we'll have to discuss and decide.
Thank you. I had one last question, I guess it's for the economic, the firm that did the assessment for the development impact fees. There are some folks who feel that Burbank is so close to downtown Los Angeles, and I understand this, it is very close to downtown LA, and that being so close makes it highly attractive as a location to develop, that it's really a kind of, she called it a boon to developers. So I'd like to ask, why we can't factor in that desirability magic into the creation of a development impact fee?
Yeah, we could have our consultants talk about the, kind of, the technical way we set that nexus, which kind of constrains, or not constrains, but it really sets a very regimented way that we set those fees based on the relationship between development and improvements necessary. So some of the more qualitative things that you're mentioning, we can't factor into the nexus law, because they're not the quantifiable algorithm that we use to set.
So the desirability factor is not something that can legally be included in a nexus study?
Yes.
That's kind of what I'm trying to understand. I mean, there are many expectations of how this fee can be developed, and I think it's important to know that we may be constrained in some way, even though we have people who feel very strongly about this. And that's the point, that I want to make sure that at least all of us understand as a whole that it's, you can't name your price, so to speak. Can't raise your prices because you want to.
That's true.
Okay. Well, I am sure other council members have questions, I'm going to hold my final comment until we get past the question period. Thank you very much, thank you for your report.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy.
Yes, thank you. My thoughts are, to simplify this, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm crazy, but it seemed to me that we could crank up to the maximum allowable and have a flexibility built in where the community development director or his designee, both of whom are really smart and know where we're headed, know what we're thinking, for them to propose alternatives so that we have the best of both worlds. Wouldn't that make some sense?
Well, I think one thing we would want to make it with our fee setup is we need to make it objective and sort of certainty for the developers. What we could do, and what has been done, is if a development is furthering another city goal or policy in some way, say, building affordable housing, maybe above and beyond what we would require, there are cities, and even we have some adjustments in our code today, where that can offset potentially an impact fee. So if you are doing the basic project, your fee is X. If you're providing more of something that we want, say, more affordable housing, then that gives you a credit off the fee. In our current fee, which is not something we're really proposing to continue, and it's more of the technicalities when we update our ordinance, we had an economic incentive where if you developed in some of our redevelopment areas, like out by the airport, you could get an offset to, if you were improving development in that area, you get a credit or an offset of the impact fees because we were incentivizing people to build in the Golden City area. I don't think that's something today, we're pretty attractive now as bringing new development in all of our city, so we might not want to do that particular thing, but we could do it on something like affordable housing, or building out certain bike infrastructure that we want, or some other transportation improvements. That would be a way, I think, that's more certain and objective and communicates more explicitly to the development community that this is what we want, because these are the credits that we might offer for certain things. That might be a way to approach what you're thinking about.
Right, well, we've talked about local control tonight. Did you want to jump in?
I'll wait till you're done, and then I'm going to jump in.
It's not a problem, I can...
No, my only concern is when you start talking about alternatives and leaving it discretionary is, when you set up development impact fees, you're saying each development has to pay their fair share, and this is what it is. And so where I've seen this come up is, if you decide you're not going to charge that fee, even if you're getting something over here, someone has to pay that fee, and oftentimes it's your own city's general fund. And so I haven't looked at the alternatives that David's speaking to, but the whole point of a nexus study is it's a proven study that says, this type of development has this kind of impact, and you have to pay this fee. There's been cities that have done special studies around, like San Diego did it because they wanted to revitalize that whole area, and they didn't want certain things happening elsewhere. So they found different, really creative ways to change what the fees would be if you were building inside versus outside the city, and everything followed that philosophy. But I don't believe it was based on just their development impact fee, so you have to think about what fees we're talking about here. So I've seen breaks for, might be other kinds of fees that we do, but a development impact fee means we've done a study, we've shown, and we've established these things that we're going to build based on these developments. So if somebody comes in and they're not paying that fee, normally somebody has to backfill it. That would be my concern with too much of an alternative. What David's suggesting is we'd have to really look and test that credit against how that affects the need for that infrastructure. So it may be something that we built in the last time we did a study and is supportable, but, so I think if we're really interested in that, it has to be, like David said, objective, but I would have concerns that it also conformed to, the study itself supports it.
I can see that, I can see that. But like, in law, I spent my whole career in law, I have found that when you're sitting there with the power and you give people choices, they feel better about the choices, they feel better about the result if they make the choices. And just like we talked about local control, you know, look at the Front Street project, I think the term, I think, you know, we talked about 30 million, 33 million. And we got a park that we would never have gotten with impact fees. We got all-new sidewalks, we got 1,500 feet of sound wall, we got elevators, none of these things would have come through impact fees, but by negotiation and giving them a choice and them wanting to be a part of the community and make their development the best it could be, we got a lot. And so that's what I'm talking about, and I hear what you're saying, but it seemed like it would be a good idea. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your report. I just have a couple of questions, and what really jumps out at me, the difference, and it's been brought up by a couple of my colleagues, the fees that are charged by the other cities versus what we charge. And we spoke earlier in regards to this SB 1600. And now, we spoke earlier in regards to this SB 1600, the law that went into effect in 1986. And we implemented ours, our policies in 1993. So we've had these policies for 27 years. I don't know whether they've changed along the ways or not, but apparently we're here. So this SB 1600, is that a law that everybody had to abide by?
Yes, this is AB 1600. It's the law that sets the rules by which we impose the fees. And so yes, every jurisdiction.
We, all cities.
All cities have to follow this, and counties, any entities have to follow this playbook to impose impact.
So how can one city get to $28,000?
So we all.
Well, we're at 1,400.
That's a good question. We, we all play by the same rules in setting the fees, but each city is unique in how much development they expect to, to have in their city and which improvements they've identified are necessary to offset that development. And so that's where you get the differences, is because each city has to make those decisions for themselves. And then also each city brings into all these other similar policy conversations that we're having is setting the maximum fee permissive versus what are our other goals and objectives.
So we haven't been proactive in setting these fees for 27 years? Or what is that?
We have raised the fees in terms of keeping up with cost considerations for construction. So it's, I, I want to be clear that we haven't set a fee in 1993 and that's the dollar amount that we continue to collect. It's risen in the last 10 years. I think just from construction changes in the cost, it's been over 20% increase in the fee that we apply.
20% of $1,000 or 20% of $10,000?
Of each fee. So whether it's a dollar fifty a square foot for community facilities, that's gone up about 20 so percent. Whether it's a $6 per square foot charge for transportation on an office building, that's gone up 20%. So each fee that was set has, they have all risen in the last 10 years, a little over 20%. But yes, in terms of the project list and how, and in each fee's amount, we have not looked at that since the 90s with the projects that we wanted to build in terms of transportation and community facilities and the general plan that was in place at the time. Those two things have definitely changed and that's why we think that it's important to do it.
To do it. To catch up.
Yes.
In essence. So 10 years ago, what were our fees? Give me a couple of examples compared to tonight, today. You don't have that? Or five years ago?
Let me, well, let me get you a specific.
20% of, you know, you can throw 20% out, but of what? That doesn't really tell me how much it was.
So for instance, we, so for instance, because transportation is my bailiwick for most of my job for office.
Well, I want to look at both.
Yes, so for offices, for transportation, an office building that's under 500,000 square feet, we charged $5.62 per square foot in 2011, 2011, 12. And in fiscal year 1920, we now charge $6.85. That's about a 22% increase. For community facilities, that's the non-transportation improvements on an office building. It was $1.46 per square foot in 1112 and $1.80 last year. For the residential, which is now, this is now per unit, not per square foot, we charged in 2011, 2012 about $2,300, $2,300 a unit, and now we charge about 20, almost $2,900 a unit.
So in 10 years, it went up $600?
Yes.
And that's what the community has been bringing to our attention for the last several months and not a year in regards to the difference in what Glendale and Pasadena charge versus what we're charging.
Yes, now.
So when was the last time the city had a hearing or a discussion like this?
Was when we set the original fees.
1993?
Yes.
27 years ago. So it's incumbent upon who to bring it forward?
I think it's, it's staff. We, like I said, the, it's really the residential is where we are, are far behind and that's what you are hearing and what we're hearing from the community is that our fees for residential are, are now well trailing our neighbors. As we mentioned in the presentation, there's one big variable, or there's one single variable that's, that, that is responsible for that large disparity, and that is that those cities collect money to acquire property for the purposes of building parks. And that's very, very expensive and that's probably the single most biggest difference between us and our neighbors. We did not, have not charged fees to acquire land and we're, and we're still proposing not to do that with this current fee for residential. The transportation fee, I think we've been very competitive and in fact, higher than our neighbors in a lot of ways. That fee, we are, we could charge even more and we'd be getting even further out of alignment with our neighbors on the commercial.
So is there something that we put, can put in our policies that this has to be addressed every five years, every seven years?
Well, so we are supposed to bring back a report every year, which we just recently did with you, and then every five years to go through the list and what have we done? What, how have we spent the money? And that's coming.
Beginning in 1993 or?
Yeah, and so it was every year, every five years, we've been doing it and this is, well, go ahead.
We've been doing it as part of the budget, so it kind of gets lost as part of the budget. But I think now we want to formalize that a lot better, so it's more of a standalone. So we bring it back and you guys have more attention to it.
And the, we are going to be bringing back the five-year, I believe in the report it said.
Yes, we think with the next, in, in concert with the next study session, we'll also be giving you the five-year report on the current, on the current fees and what.
And let's just make, make it so we don't forget. Staff changes, the leadership changes, when did they did it last? I don't know, you know, who wanted it? I don't know. So it's got to be somewhere that it's got to be brought back and regardless of who's in the staff positions or who's, who's, you know, saying that it's due now, moving forward, I mean, 1993, we're talking 27 years.
I to, no, I was going to say, I totally agree with you. It's a long time since 1993 to have done it. I think the reason cities take longer to do it is it's, because if the list is a good list when you develop it, then you start looking at where are we on our list? So when you do these, you come up with the projects that the money can be spent on. So no, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying.
I understand.
And I think that's why if you bring back the yearly and five-year reports, then you have a better sense of where are we on our project list.
Because today, we have $150 million backlog in infrastructure. So, so, and, and increasing rate as we speak. So along the way from 97, we could have been cutting, that 150 million might not have, may not have been as big, right? But nonetheless, you understand where I'm coming from and please keep that in mind moving forward. And like I said, we will be here, the staff, you guys will be retired and having a great time in retirement. There'll be new kids, new, new bodies in place. As long as there's something in there that says we have to do it. Let's not wait till 27 more years. Thank you. I appreciate the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm echoing everything they said, so I'm not going to repeat it, but I'm going to bring a different component. I think one of the biggest problems is that has, I see just by reading the emails and having conversations with different community folks throughout the city, their biggest issue is that there is an $18,000 to $19,000 difference what Burbank is only charging 2,000 compared to our cities. Two, we've, in the last couple of years, there's been six major projects that we've approved. And I believe that the La Terra project kind of became hostage because people, at least that didn't know about the project till somebody showed up at their house to sign a petition, didn't know about the $33 million in public benefits and what the definition of a public benefit really is. And the community was very confused. And to quantify that is they turned in the signatures. There's enough signatures there that now we have to wait for the county to verify the signatures. But I think that when we come back again for the next study session, I would really like to get into the meat and potatoes of the public benefits of these projects that we just approved. So the public ad nauseam can see it on the monitor, something very simple that they can understand that from the IKEA project, what were the public benefits that we got, whether it's in that area or at large? The dollar amount, the improvement amount that went into it, we got the Avion project, Front Street, La Terra, I want that project in there because people need to see what the council voted for and what the 33 million in public benefits were. Talleria, including the airport terminal. Because in looking at enough people signed this petition to stop or a referendum on this project clearly states that people have a perception that this is a free giveaway to developers. So in the next study session, I really like to be able to, to learn and also collectively with the community, really get educated exactly what public benefits were generated from these projects all the way up to, you know, 77th Front Street. Because I, like I said, reading the emails, there's definitely a disconnect on what the perception is from the resident that, you know, only hears it from other folks on social media to the reality of, of, you know, what was voted on. And definitely, I, I agree with everything else, so I don't want to repeat that. But hopefully understand, I think we, we got to be able in the next study session to show, you know, because I've always wondered, so we get X number of dollars for the police department. In the perception of the community, they feel that the police department is still understaffed. But when I explain to them that in La Terra, I believe it was $23,000 that was going to the police department. But that doesn't mean we can hire additional officers. It just means we can purchase another squad car or we can build a, a substation. So, but with these, you know, six projects moving forward to the residents out there, we're bringing in more people, we're housing more people, but the police department is still at 160 off, sworn officers that were budgeted for. How is this project reflective of the changing needs in policing and personnel or fire department? And those are the real concerns. And when I tell them that this adding police personnel bodies comes from the general fund. So this needs to be vetted out, because the public doesn't quite understand when we talk about that. And that's very frustrating to them knowing, you know, that when I tell them, oh no, this comes from the, the police department's budget, but the 23,000 from the Front Street or the library contribution that was made or the fire department cannot be used to hire personnel. It can only be used for infrastructure. And this is where people really get confused and some, some of them have really expressed their, you know, disappointment that you guys aren't balancing out the needs of the city, looking into the future while you're approving these projects. So I'd like to see that in the next study come back as we're reviewing how we really should talk about raising these fees and how it's really impacting the infrastructure, but a little bit more basic so people understand where this money is going to.
Yeah, we will definitely do that. And I will say the DIFs can't directly solve that problem either because the DIFs can't pay for bodies either. But, you know, if the DIFs can offset general fund obligations, then you can use that money to then buy, you know, increase staff. You can also use community benefits to do the same thing. If the development is now maintaining all the streets and sidewalks around the project, that's lifting burden off the general fund, which you can then redirect in theory to more bodies. So it's, it's complicated and I understand the public's frustration because you can't just tell the developer, you need to buy more police and fire positions. Our tools are not that direct, so we have to do it a little more nuanced and we have, I think our point is we have two or a few different ways to do that. We have DIFs, we have community betterments and community PDDA process, and so how to use all of those tools. And so we'll be bringing back based on your comments and the council's comments for round two, to look at the, kind of the math for that.
And then looking at it close, closer with, because the residents are always comparing us to Glendale and Pasadena. So when you come back again for the next study session, I really like to know with the single-family residential per unit and looking at the report, for the most part, Burbank existing is 3296, but I'm looking at Glendale at 21, 828, and Pasadena's 25,800. They're, they're bigger than our city, but I'd like to know because of that cost, has it, you know, is there a way we can measure? Did it stop their development? Did it cause lesser interested developers to, to build? Did it hurt the city planning department in working on community benefits? Does Glendale or Pasadena have the same direction that the council of us united said, we want to build better neighborhoods and just approving one project, just to approve it, we really want to challenge the developer and really look at building a better neighborhood, including, you know, affordable housing, low-cost housing? Is that part of, you know, when you come back, is that part of Glendale and Pasadena's, you know, policy and, and development? And see how that works. Because I, I want to know everything before I weigh in more into raising our fees. But I do agree, we got to study this and we got to look at it moving forward. Thank you, sir.
So just to clarify, developmental, development impact fees cannot be used to hire more police, more firemen?
No, they cannot.
Okay. And on the, the Burbank versus neighboring cities, I know that for, on Front Street, for example, there are $33 million in benefits. And you mentioned, like for affordable, affordable housing, there would be a credit off, offset. And they did 69, or there are proposed 69 affordable units that they can do so much cheaper than we could take, than we could build 69 units. So is that an example of that?
So there, we don't have an affordable housing DIF on, on anything now. There is an inclusionary housing fee that they can pay as an alternative to actually building the housing. We, we negotiated for them to actually build the housing and not pay the fee because that was actually leveraged and provided more housing. So that's another tool and a different funding tool is inclusionary housing to, to build affordable housing as part of residential projects. And then as Ms. Wong mentioned, there is, Glendale, for instance, assesses an affordable housing fee on commercial development to help have commercial development shoulder some costs to provide affordable housing. We want to bring that to you separate because, because of the dollar amounts of, and the high cost of providing affordable housing and that mismatch, the, the maximum fee is, is, is very, very, very high, almost nonsensically high. And what, and what Glendale did and what we would say is if you wanted to consider something like that, we really have to look at that in a real special case that, to figure out if you do want to afford or pay for some affordable housing through commercial development, we have to look at it a lot more closely. And it was kind of fogging up this more general approach for just the community facilities, which is a little more straightforward. So we want to bring that back separately, probably in the same conversation you have with inclusionary housing policy, because it's kind of more related, we think, to that than to, to the, to the DIF discussion.
Okay, thank you. And so similar to what Vice Mayor Frutos, like if you could come back with, for example, on the Front Street project, it's over, if you divide 33 million by 573 units, it's over $57,000 a unit. And so would, did Glendale, do Glendale and Pasadena also get something like that? Because their fee, for example, Glendale is 18,751 and Pasadena's 23,774. So that comparison would be very helpful.
Yes, we can do that. And again, to, for Pasadena specifically, that large fee for housing for community facilities, it's only for parks. So they're not getting any money for police and fire or, or library or IT or anything. They do charge a transportation fee. And then Glendale, they don't charge any transportation fee on anything. So it's, it's funny how each city decides through its own process what's important and then what the fee is. And so that's why it's hard to do one-to-one and it's, it's, it's not, it's, there's more detail and more nuance to looking at Pasadena and saying, hey, they charge 20,000 a unit and we charge three. Yes, but it's not a clear, well, we just raise it to 20,000 because they're. Yes, but it's not a clear, well, we just raise it to 20,000 because they're funding a very specific high cost item that we may not want to. And we're maybe charging a lower fee, but we're getting, uh, contributions towards a lot more, uh, things than Pasadena is.
On, on page four, the, um, examples of DIF funded projects. So can you give us an idea when you come back, what projects funded those? For example, the Buena Vista Library improvements. I mean, these are very, very significant projects. Library operating equipment, overrun park facilities, police and fire headquarters. Um, I think it would be helpful to see what developments funded those.
With the, with the impact fees, um, it's not that the money from a particular project goes into pay for a particular capital project. We receive all the money over time as development occurs and it all goes into our fund 127. And then we're saving that money. We're waiting in many cases to get outside money to combine with that. And then when we capture enough money of, of DIF and then enough outside money, then we pull the trigger and we build the improvement. We also sometimes for transportation, we have to wait to collect, we're waiting for the projects to be built. We're also, because we're waiting for their traffic to appear. And then we're timing that with their money and bringing outside money and then trying to build the improvement. So we could only say that we built central lib, or we built Buena Vista Library and in this year and so many projects before that year were built and they're forest ostensibly paid for the fee. But it's, it's not like, oh, Project ABC put in money and we built the library. It's, it's, we collect on one hand and then we spend on the other hand.
And, and so on page five, where you have the DIF update and the revised infrastructure projects list. So that will be funded, that's just a project list that we need and some of that will be funded by DIF and then grants and development agreement and anything else we can get.
Yes, so for each, each subcategory, um, the city identified the new capital improvements that are necessary to, um, support new development. Uh, and then what the Nexus study did is said, okay, here are all the capital projects we expect to do or want to do. Um, you know, and many of them are, are unfunded. For each project, here's the share that, here's the share of that project that new development can pay for based on the Nexus test. Um, and so therefore we can pay through DIFs, that's that percentage of the total cost. And then we have to find the other money, um, from somewhere else to, to actually do the improvement. And so transportation is the easiest thing to, to, to think about because a lot of times what we do is we use our DIFs for a 20% local match for a grant. And then that grant plus the DIF builds the project.
Okay. And on page seven, where we have the DIF update Nexus study fair share analysis. So this is proposed where we have the DIF is 30% and the other funding sources is 70. That's moving forward.
Yes.
I, I think that's all of my questions. So this potentially is just, yes, Councilmember Gable Luddy, of course.
Uh, I think it's a really good idea to, to bring back, um, a more, um, clear assessment of the public benefits that the city received through the approval of the projects that we've talked about. I think Avian is a good one. Front Street is a very good one. First Street would be a good one. I have, feel very strongly that over the last four years, the staff has gotten more creative and involved in negotiating these public benefits. And that is our current state of the art. I would say those projects are the best projects to profile in terms of value returned and how it stacks up against a development impact fee. What I'd like to ask the staff to do is also put a value on maintenance. It's something that we can never collect from it and do. And yet we have developers who are going to sustain multi-decade maintenance of some of the features of the projects that they're going to build into their projects. So while I don't know whether you factored it into the 33 million, I think for the purposes of the discussion, it should somehow be factored in. And then the other thing I would suggest is these are large projects where there's a lot of give and take and a lot of negotiation. Can you profile one or two 35 unit projects or something like that, something of medium, uh, not medium, but sort of medium to higher density, 35 units? And give us an idea of what the fees might look like as a result of a project, a multifamily project. And maybe, I don't even know if we'll ever see more single family projects in the city. The land is mostly in the hillsides and it seems like they're very problematic slopes. Um, but certainly multifamily would be, I think, a reasonable thing. And, uh, I think the, those are the, the items that I would ask for when you come back and speak to us. And, you know, Mayor, you're absolutely right about this per unit value, the 57,000, just quick back of the envelope math, is that with the Front Street project, taking the 33 and dividing it by the number of units, and that might, it, it's quite extraordinary. So I look forward to the subsequent report from staff on both the value we've achieved through our negotiation for larger projects and building the whole neighborhood and what might be achieved from smaller projects. So we have an, an idea between the two scale of buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy.
Thank you. I, uh, I have some concerns. We're, we're theoretically giving you direction and I don't want to have another study session. I really don't. I want to move forward. And the reason for that is pretty obvious. We're getting direction from Sacramento all the time about how they're going to do this and how they're going to do that. And we better like it. And one of the things that they've been talking about is no development fees, you know, things like that are getting in the way of housing. So I, I'd like to move forward with something as soon as possible. And, uh, I just wanted to comment, I hope no one will take it really personally, but a couple of the, the pictures here are just really hard to read. Maybe it's that my eyes are shot this part of the day. But number two, I spent a lot of time trying to figure out what the lettering was in that cute little, uh, house. And, you know, it's really not helpful and I'm, I'm not picking on anybody. And number 17, uh, somebody got fancy with the orange and the green. I mean, it's really hard to read. Don't do that, you know? Blue and white, black and blue.
We will blow it up and we will simplify it.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Talamontis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple more observations. In a quick glance, when you see like, for example, Pasadena at $25,000. And I've, I've heard that they only focus those monies towards parks, just one bucket. But even when you add up all of our buckets, we don't even come close to $25,000. So whether it's one bucket or 10 buckets, you know, when you add up all those buckets for Burbank, we've been quite reasonable for developers, uh, and lucrative for them as well. I mean, Burbank is a place they want to come to. It's not a place that we have to give away the farm for them to come. So, and, you know, I'm not going, I'm not saying that we have to propose $25,000 like the other cities do, or 24,000 at the other city. But let's reasonably, let's raise them up to a responsible level, but at the same time, uh, get some return on the investment. Uh, you know, state of good repair was brought up, uh, by Councilmember Gable Luddy. We have to build in a state of good repair for future developments, especially if we take on the operation of whatever it is. There's gotta be a built in state of good repair for 20 or 30 years worth of taking care of something, whatever it might be. Because down the road, the general fund is going to be stuck with it.
We understand that, yes. The, at, at the bottom line, our, on residential, our current fee is very low compared to our neighbors. And, and, and we may not have to go all the way to the top, but it sounds like, um, the council wants to look at raising it. Keep in mind the state of good repair comment that you mentioned, DIFs doesn't solve that. We can't, we can't use maintenance. So if we raise the DIFs to 30,000 and now we're getting less maintenance, uh, or the ability for developers to off, offer to offload maintenance onto the private developer from the city, um, we may not get that offer as much if the DIFs are very high. So again, it's, it's balance. I think we need to raise the, the multi or the, the residential, it's low. It's just a setting that right level. And, um, hearing your comments and direction, um, I will come back with information to hopefully help you make that choice.
Let me ask the city attorney. Madam City Attorney, you mentioned that DIFs are not negotiable, or are they?
Well, no, we, you set them. You pay them and you're, or you don't. If we, if we want to offer credits, like David was talking about, then I think we need to just look at how we're doing that and make sure whatever study we've done is supported. So, you know, um, Councilmember Murphy was saying alternatives. I have more of a concern when you talk about an alternative versus a credit that's supported within our study.
I meant credit, I meant credit.
Okay. I mean, I, I understood what you were trying to get at. I just wanted to say there's some legal ramifications with that. But one of the things that's really clear is development impact fees are, can only be used for capital. So, you know, they can't pay for those new officers or new staff or police. They can't pay for maintenance or anything else. So I don't, we need to talk to our consultants that did this study, but I would be concerned about saying, well, if they give this much to maintenance, then that, then they get a credit because it's not covering the same thing. A development impact fee is to pay the cost. So if we have, um, if a developer was to give, build something themselves that's part on our project list, then yeah, they probably wouldn't be paying the impact fee because they're actually building it. And that's a negotiation, right? If it's part of a development agreement and depending what's on our list. But to say, because you're going to pay this for us in maintenance, you don't have to pay your development impact fee. It's what I was saying about, then you backfill it. So we might accept, you're going to give us all this money for maintenance and we'll pay that development impact fee because we're freeing up money from our general fund because we're getting that development impact. I mean, we're getting that, um, built, yes, thank you, public benefit built into our development agreement. So there's ways of looking at it. And that's what we, we have to consider. But I think the really important thing is, you know, DIFs can only pay for capital improvements and you have to look at what are your list of projects and what are you trying to take care of? And so I hear what all of you are saying. The only other comment I wanted to make, if you, if it's okay, is the thing, some of the state legislation that we've already seen, so some of the two-year bills that are still pending, some of the stuff that was out there, they were saying, you can't change your fees if they weren't in place by like, I think it was, um, some of them went back to July, maybe it might even been 2018. So some of them had passed, some of them, it doesn't matter when your fees went in, it's whether they're going to say, um, you can't, uh, put these fees on certain type of housing. So earlier, the mayor herself raised the issue of, is our development, development impact fees a, um, a barrier to getting housing built? Well, we already know that the legislature is looking at that. There's no doubt about that. But I don't, without having a total crystal ball, I don't think it matters whether you adopt them now or adopt them with the budget or wait, because a lot of the stuff I saw is just, you can't charge them for a certain amount of time. Some of them are, you can't change the fees and we're going to look at what your fees were going back a year or two years ago. So, um, I'm just saying, I, I understood the Councilmember Murphy's feeling of urgency and I just wanted to temper that a little bit with what some of the bills have said. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I also, uh, going back to community benefit, uh, you know, there's community benefit in everything. A swimming pool, it's a community benefit. Whether I use it or not, that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's not a community benefit. A bike lane that's, uh, that's being built, especially when it's kept, is keeping you from the, from the cars that are being alongside of you, you're being protected as a bike, as a biker, that's a community benefit. Whether I use it or not, it's a community benefit. So, you know, just, I hear some of the people that if, if 100,000 people in the community don't use it, it's not a community benefit. I don't agree with that at all. Thank you very much.
I have another question or two. On, um, the chart Burbank versus neighboring cities, um, for the single family residential per unit, it has that Burbank's maximum allowable is 12,813. And Glendale's actual or existing is 21,828 and Pasadena's is 35,028. So why would ours maximum only be 12,813?
As I mentioned before, the, the main variable in that is we do not include in our, our proposed new fees, um, capturing the cost to, uh, to, to buy land to build parks. That variable to acquire land for something is what's tweaking those fees versus ours. And so we have taken the approach in Burbank that, you know, first of all, we are blessed with a lot of, uh, neighborhood parks and larger parks. Um, and we have taken the position in the past that, uh, we are expanding our parks capacity on our, either on our existing facilities by adding more amenities to them, or in the case of some of these recent development projects, we have, uh, we, we acquire the project to build a park. So we're not scraping together for 20 years to buy, to, to buy and build a park. We're getting it upfront. Um, or potentially we're using city land or other assets, um, to then, to build the park. So in our parks fee, we do have, uh, the Parks Department provided us with their project list of new park facilities, but they all assume that the land that they're being built on, we either already have as a park or we already have in some other way. And so we're not including land acquisition, uh, in that number. That's the main difference why our, our new max is still only 12,000 and the others are, you know, 20 to 30,000.
Because we don't, we don't need to.
We, we're, our position is we aren't in the business of buying park, buying raw, you know, either buying raw land or buying buildings, clearing them to build parks.
On Avian, how much, that includes park space? Is that, do you, I know that's...
It's more open space, um, and, and landscaping. It's not like an active...
Parks here, they're not really parks. They're not really parks. I know, there's been several times where we're throwing out a couple of developments. There's a park here and a park. It's just a little piece of grass that you can take your dog to. I, I mean, realistically, when you look at a park, I'm looking at Macambridge, I'm looking at Olive Park, uh, I'm looking at Verdugo Park. Those are parks. What we're being provided for by these developers that are very, being very generous in, in their community benefit is a piece of area in their development that's got grass on it and that you can take your dog and you can take, uh, you know, the family can go there and enjoy it. But I wouldn't call it a park. I mean, obviously, maybe I'm mistaken.
We're, yeah, we're not at, we're not getting new Macambridges all over, um, but La Terra, um, or 77 Front Street, um, we'll, we'll get the information on the side.
So Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director and Planning, uh, you're right, Mr. Talamontis. We even called it open space. We didn't actually call it a park for, for a myriad of reasons. But I guess what, what David's referring to is that, and we'll bring it back because it's kind of hard. The, um, Councilmember Gable Luddy brought up a good point. Over the last four years with your direction with the council, um, you've upped the ante for what's expected of a project. I would say if we were having this conversation four months ago, uh, four years ago, we'd be saying, wow, we really should just up the DIF fees and call it a day. But because you've seen projects that have, uh, provided over $30 million, over $20 million worth of, um, public improvements, some of which in the case of Avian, sure, it's, you know, there's a bike lane, there's a trail, there's actually, they're building a bike lane all the way from one metro link station to another. They're providing, uh, amenities on both sides of, uh, the Hollywood Way, all the way to those two. So there are things that there's no way the individual project paying its fair share would be able to crystallize those improvements at the time that they open up the project and it's completed. That's the difference between those three or four projects that you're looking at now versus getting, you know, 30% share here, 30% share there. And then 10 years from now saying, hey, we've got a couple of million dollars, let's go now saying, hey, we've got a couple of million dollars, let's go buy X or build a bike lane here. So I think what you're expressing, the questions are very good questions because I think what we need to do, and we want to do it as quickly as possible, Councilmember Murphy, but I think it's going to take a little bit, I'll use the word, we need to go slow to go fast. And I think what you'll see is, when we bring the numbers back and we're able to kind of break them out for you, you'll see that in many ways, the amenities that you've received have an immediate effect and a multiplier effect for the neighborhood. Because if the neighborhood's able to access safe bike lanes and protect lives, that is value added. If you're able to build an elevator that provides access from, you know, the top of an overpass down to the metro link station, that's value added. That would take decades, if not years, to build on our own. So I think when we bring that information, it'll help you because I, what I'm hearing is, you should be very proud of the work that you've done over the last four years, but I think we need to help you be able to quantify that hard work so that it shows that in comparison to the DIFs or in combination with the DIFs, you've been able to help build and protect neighborhoods. And I think if you, if we take that approach, I think when we come back in a couple of weeks, we can do that for you. So.
Look, wait, I just have, um, it's, and I'm not advocating for higher fees. I just have questions about it. So because the, it's two different categories. One, single-family and one is multifamily or industrial office. So, and I've participated in the Complete Our Streets and I see some proposed improvements and, for example, like a linear park, like in the, in a center median of a roadway.
Sure.
And so that would be, that's park-like. It's a linear park. And would that be something, it's in a single-family neighborhood, would that be something that would be included in a single-family home permit?
So I think you'd have to, we'd have to go back, and I don't want to, just off the top of my head, assume that, but there is a study that was done that listed, there was three pages worth of transportation improvements and open space improvements, bike and pet improvements, that totaled over almost $77 million, David? So I think if we go back, when we, when we bring this back to you, we can go into a lot of the details. Because as I was looking at the list, I also said, hey, well, 77 Front Street built this bike lane. 77 Front Street was responsible for these intersection improvements. But David was, as astute as he is, he was able to clarify for me that it's not just the project. It was even a much larger project within the city. But, and they, they paid a good chunk of it, which probably saved us, we'd probably need three or four 77 Front Streets to do the work they're doing right now in the immediate, once it gets built. But, but in the big picture, I think we all agree that, and you're well aware of the fact, that we do need to increase the DIFs. I think what you're going to be looking at is, how do we do it in a way that we don't kill the golden goose when it comes to certain uses that exist in the city that everybody's very proud of building? And at the same time, sticking and staying the course with building 12,000 units in the next 15 years. I think a little bit of context, when you look at Glendale and Pasadena, is Glendale and their downtown specific plan, they had 20,000 units. They hit that mark, you know, maybe five or six years ago. And then at that same time, they upped their DIF fees. And in a way, it kind of was a cooling effect to say, well, you know, we've, we've hit quite a big threshold, maybe we need to kind of throttle down a little bit. You have the scenario with the city of Pasadena, they also had a downtown specific plan. They hit that threshold. And then most recently, maybe within the last five years, they approved another 20,000 units along metro link corridors. So it all depends. I think we need to look at everything because if we're trying to build up a certain sector, let's say the housing sector for building in the appropriate locations, if you overburden that in its, in its, what I call its early stages, that could have an impact. But I think all of that is, we just need to give that information to you and present it in a way that many of you have noted is, get us an apples-to-apples comparison because I think that'll help us. And then also account for a lot of the hard work that you as a council have done with those public amenities. Because I, I think you're right, we haven't told as good a story as we should. And the DIFs, the DIFs create an opportunity to help tell that story. Because you should be very proud of the work that you guys have done in the last four years. It's a lot of money. I mean, we're talking over $50 million, almost $50 million worth of public improvements.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Mr. Ramirez, you bring up a really good point. When you get off the 134 and you make a right on Central, you can see all the apartments that went up real quick. But they're, they don't have character. They're just a big, for the most part, white and brown and gray building. As you go down there and they got rid of parking on one side and it's a bike lane. One thing that I, I am very proud that we as a council is really about building better neighborhoods. And that means that we do work with, you know, the developers and the planned development plan that looks at everything. And I don't ever, ever want to be like Glendale and just build and collect money. I really want really deep thought into any project that's moving forward to continue to build a better walkable, bikeable, you know, with amenities, you know, what we've been working really hard. And I think that point, when I do talk to residents, when they're concerned, I just look at, you know, look at Central right off the 134 freeway. That's what we would get if we didn't push back on the developers. I say, no, no, no. And you've done a great job and, and your, your team has of working with developers and giving, like in the last project, 33 million in public benefits. And I will continue to fight hard as long as I'm allowed to be on the council for new projects, that it's about building a better neighborhood than just doing an example like Glendale and just build out in the next five years. And then people are going to say, hey, you took the character away. So no, you, that's what I'm about.
And we're going to, we're going to try to help you quantify what that hard work is that you've, that you've put.
Okay, thank you. And, and so the next step will include like a, a project list?
We'll, we'll look at those projects in particular that you've brought up over those four, those four years to start, start that discussion, have a dialogue. Because I think once we start looking at the numbers, that might generate more questions. And I think we need to be able to just put it in front of you, put it in a way that is easily for you to understand that. And, and also so that we're able to communicate it in the same manner. Thank you.
So then the recommendation that is we have before us, do we need a motion for this? Or I think we've, I think we've provided policy, policy direction and input on the city's development.
Take the motion.
Okay, feet one is. Okay, we've done that.
Just a second one, I think.
Second one.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we have provided policy direction. So I'm going to move that we direct staff to bring back a refined analysis of existing and proposed DIF levels, including case studies of the recently approved development projects at a subsequent city council meeting
Okay. Councilmember Gableletti?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Well done.
Thank you. Tonight, we have one report to council. After staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with public comment. Please fill out a yellow general comment card and hand it to the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first period of public comment. Our report tonight is for the adoption of housing policies and a 2019-2020 housing bills update. I would like to invite Ms. Simone McFarland, Assistant Community Development Director, to please present the report.
Great, thank you. I'm so happy to be here tonight and good evening to all of you. Tonight, I'm assisted by our other assistant directors in community development, and that is Mr. Fred Ramirez and David Criski with planning and transportation. And so if you have any questions later on, they'll be here to answer those. So as, can you bring up the slides, please? Thank you. And as you've learned tonight, when the Emmanuel Jones talked about, we know that there was about 88 housing bills in the last legislative cycle, in the 19, 2019 and the 2020 cycle. And those have been either proposed, defeated, they're going through the process, or they've already been signed into law. And currently, about 29 of those housing bills are still under consideration. And the legislator has started, started introducing those new bills that he talked about tonight. They said a range between 1,000 and 2,000 new bills coming forward. So we know that there'll be some housing bills included in that. The large number of housing bill introductions has been in response to the existing statewide housing crisis that has resulted in the low housing supply and increased housing demand that's made affordable housing hard to come by for the prospective homeowners and renters alike. In an effort to meet projected demand and stabilize housing costs, Governor Newsom's and, and his like-minded state legislators have called for the additional building of 3.5 million houses in California by 2025. So that's within five years. One of the results of that will be that Burbank will more likely be, receive a requirement to build 9,000 units during the upcoming Rena cycle, which would be 2021 to 2029. The legislature has also, is also concerned with increasing rents that continue to climb, which has resulted in households to be burdened with more of their income being used for housing and in the worst-case scenarios, forcing low-income residents out of urbanized, high-cost cities. The state's response to this concern is reflected in the passage of AB 1482, a rent control law that effectively controls rents in specified units and more older than 15 years old. Along with this change, there's also been a pack of laws pertaining to the building of more accessory doling units or ADUs and junior ADUs that went into effect in January. And lastly, tonight, we've talked about SB 50, a law that would greatly have, would have greatly taken away local control in terms of the residential development review and approval process. The bill was defeated last Thursday and it's anticipated that a version of this bill will be more likely to come back in the next session. Last Thursday, Scott Weiner, the author of SB 50, introduced a new law we talked about tonight, SB 902, that could be tweaked into some version of the SB 50 bill. Additionally, there's AB 1279, which was sponsored by Assemblymember Bloom, that's already passed through the House and could be used as a vehicle through the Senate with similar SB 2, SB 50-type language. And staff will be monitoring both of those bills. It has been challenging, to say the least, to keep up with this deluge of housing bills. And unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be any letup. The new housing laws are often written with complicated and contradictory text, not only within the law itself, but with other proposed or recently approved laws. These are all already resulting in substantial changes to the way we do business and we expect more as cleanup bills will be proposed in the legislative cycles. This includes the current twin ADU cleanup bills that we talked about tonight in both the House and the Senate, AB 953 and SB 773. We've included a list of laws and a brief overview that we were helped with by Emmanuel Jones. And this was updated as amended attachment one provided in your packet today. As you've already heard, it's important to remember that these bills are constantly changing as they move through the legislative process. And we're not staffed to read every single one of these bills and analyze the ramifications. Therefore, staff request, if city council has any specific questions on any of those bills listed in the packet, that staff be allowed to go back, make notes, go back, and we'll present them in the future, or we'll follow up with a memorandum, whichever you decide. So to ensure that the city of Burbank can be responsive and always evolving with housing legislation, staff is recommending that city council consider adopting a certain policy statements that would be integrated into our legislative platform and shared with our local and state and federal electeds. These statements will also assist staff in determining support or oppositions of these bills quicker and aid in the writing of letters to our elected officials. The proposed 11 policies have been created based on the discussions with the city council and staff during the last city council meetings and that we've had regarding housing. So if it's okay with council, what we'd like to do is go through each one separately. We can have a discussion on each one and then go on to the next. Is that okay? Okay. So I'm going to sit down so I can write notes as we go through them. And the first, the first policy statement reflects the, one of the main concerns that city council has expressed in relationship to the recent ADU laws. That is consideration of the homeowners and non-owner occupied properties. The sentence reads, reads as such for the policy. "The city of Burbank supports homeownership and by extension homeowner occupancy, which builds personal wealth and pride of the ownership while protecting and building neighborhoods." This means that homeownership continues to be a priority to the city council but does not necessarily preclude outside investment into Burbank. But as such, any bill that adds additional units on land currently zoned R1 or single-family under the general plan and does not provide owner occupancy requirements is inconsistent with the community's adopted land use goals and could be opposed. Through this statement, we explain that it is the belief of city council that any legislative action that further erodes homeownership opportunities and results in non-owner occupancy opens the door for rampant land speculation, where many of our neighborhood properties could be owned by corporations who are not concerned with the community character but are beholden to the balance sheet. And I'll stop there for any thoughts.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you can do thoughts, but the council can't take a final action until the mayor calls for any cards. But you could have a back-and-forth now. There aren't any cards right now, but your conversation might stimulate someone wanting to talk. So there's no problem with discussion. It's just your final vote, vote on the A through the 11 items would need to wait till after she calls for a public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments thus far?
Okay. Perfect. We will move on to B. If you can put it up on the screen, please. So under the second one, "Our general plan, housing element and specific, specific plans, including housing goals that help facilitate new housing development in a responsible manner, that is fully integrated into our community and not piecemealed without any regard to creating, protecting, and building neighborhoods." The second policy reads, "The city of Burbank supports the building of new housing while protecting and building neighborhoods. For this reason, we believe, we support ongoing engagement between the state and local governments to ensure local control is maintained and responsible development is promoted in collaborative effort to address the local and statewide housing crisis. A one-size-fits-all approach is not aligned with a previously established regulations that govern the development and implementation of the city's general plan and housing element. Therefore, Burbank will oppose legislation that reduces our ability to implement objective development standards to facilitate new housing that meets the needs of all Burbank households and our workforce. And at the same time, we want new housing projects to provide amenities and help build and protect our neighborhoods." Council's thoughts on that?
I would, instead of calling them housing projects, I would maybe call them developments or housing communities. But I...
But where did...
I, I'm sorry, I don't see that in the statement.
It's, um, it's projects. It's just in the last sentence. "All Burbank households and workforce while still ensuring that new housing projects." Instead of projects, I suggest developments or communities provide amenities that help build neighborhoods.
We're on...
On B? You're on B, Mayors?
Yes.
So they...
The mayor's reading the actual agenda item?
The actual, you're reading out of the staff report.
Right. Isn't that what you're reading?
No, what we're, what we're voting, what we will be voting on in the future would be the sentence that says, "B, the city of Burbank supports the building of new housing while protecting and building neighborhoods. For this reason, we support ongoing engagement between the state and local governments to ensure local control is maintained and responsible development is promoted in a collaborative effort to address the local and statewide housing crisis." So that would be the policy statement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the ones that are noted in bold. So just that portion of the text.
Okay. Okay.
Does that clarify?
Thank you.
Any comments on that? Okay. We will continue on to C. "While the city of Burbank supports the building of ADUs and junior ADUs within neighborhoods that have existing infrastructure to substantiate additional people living within the area, along with protecting public health and safety, the city strongly opposes any legislation that demands the wholesale conversion of Burbank's R1-zoned areas to be de facto R3 or R4 densities, without consideration of the policy's long-term effects to public infrastructure, services, and the potential to erode the quality of life for our residents." Therefore, the third policy statement reads, "The city of Burbank supports responsible development and zoning regulations to help ensure the building of neighborhoods."
Thank you. Comments? Nope. Bless you.
Thank you. Okay. Bless you, and we'll move on. To the fourth policy statement says, "The city of Burbank supports the addition of accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and junior ADUs with the limitations of floor-area ratio, FAR. Parking replacement in ADU sizes that result in ADUs and junior ADUs that are appropriate in scale to the existing family, single-family home and the surrounding neighborhoods. This support for ADUs and junior ADUs is further contingent upon allowing owner occupancy requirements. A 850 to 1,000-square-foot ADU and junior ADU of 500 square feet may not be appropriate for in a fire zone or hillside area, as well in horsekeeping areas where slow fuel, high fuel areas distance and siding between equine facility and habitable areas may necessitate smaller ADUs than currently allowed by state law. Other areas may accommodate larger ADUs, but these locations and the appropriate ADU size should be determined by the local municipality based on sewer and water capacity, traffic flow, and/or public safety issues, which may vary from area to area."
I suggest in the first sentence, "The city of Burbank supports the addition of ADUs and junior ADUs with limitations upon FAR, comma, location, comma, parking replacement," and on. But if we could insert location after FAR?
After FAR? Okay.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Yes?
Could I just suggest that since she doesn't die here with all this reading, that you just say, "Now look at C," and we'll all read it to ourselves, and then she's going to read a book before this is over. And we can clearly read the exhibit we have except...
Right. Right. Sorry.
It's not like we need it. There's nobody here. I'm just saying, you know, it'd be nice if she didn't have to read everything, and we should just say, "All right, look at number C, read it yourself," and then we'll go from there. Does that make sense? Let's not kill her off.
I think we're going to kill her off.
Really?
Well, I...
Willingly?
First, first, I think it's very helpful to read the reasons supporting this policy because there may be people watching the community, even though they're not here tonight.
I'm saying just the stuff that we have in front of us.
Now, I'm lost. She's read, she's... You mean, you want her just to read the justification for the policy?
I'm just saying, what we don't have is, you know, it might be quicker just to let her keep going, but I mean...
I think it's quicker.
It just seems...
I think it's informative for her to provide the explanation.
Well, I'll just think of it as a bedtime story.
As long as I don't put you to sleep.
No.
Okay. We'll move on then. We'll go to E. "In order to promote the use of public transit, the city acknowledges that multi-pronged approach to how much parking is required and how parking is managed will be key. Therefore, the city encourages the use of lower parking rates based on the best practices for the following: transit-oriented developments, ongoing funding and maintenance of new transit facility, unbundled and shared parking, the use of tandem and mechanical parking, along with the use of paid parking, which includes dynamic pricing options, and transit subsidies for bus and rail passes in lieu of parking spaces. All of this promotes the use of public transit as a viable alternative to single-family, sorry, single-occupancy vehicles." The fifth policy reads, "The city of Burbank supports lower parking requirements for new and renovated development in areas near transit to encourage foregoing single-occupancy vehicle trips."
Thank you. Comment? Yes, Councilmember Talamontes?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to... This is a tough policy here in regards to supports lowering parking requirements. I'd like to, my colleagues to consider, would consider, instead of supports, the city of Burbank would consider lowering parking requirements. You can remember transit-oriented developments. I think the criteria was half a mile from a transit, from a transit hub. Half a mile in the city of Burbank pretty much covers everything. You know, when you start looking at different transit hubs of view throughout the city, half a mile is covering just about anyway.
So, yes.
So I would say would consider instead of supports. Go ahead.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you. I also support the Councilmember Talamontes's wording on it. My only question to the subject matter experts, how would this apply if it's a retail at the bottom and housing on top and you reduce parking? How do, how do we protect, you know, obviously, the people that are going to visit the retail component of that transit-oriented development?
So I will start off, but David, Chris Key, who's our transportation guru, can add to it, but from a project-by-project basis, in the case of, we'll use 77 Front Street as an example, they had ground-floor retail. I think Councilmember Talamontes had a very good question that said, "How many parking spaces are going to be allocated for that? So what happens if it becomes more popular and you need more parking?" One of the things that was approved as part of that was to allow them to unbundle the parking so that they could use unused guest parking or unused hotel parking to offset it. So what this is intended to do, and even your correction, I think, is on point because it allows us to consider it, and it needs to make sense for the city. And I think when you see some projects that will be coming forth in the near future, there's parking studies that are combined with it, so that you look at best management practices to right-size the parking to the use so that we don't end up with $80,000 worth of sunken parking spaces in four levels of subterranean, where maybe that, the, the ability to be able to share the parking facilitates an affordable housing unit that either gets a transit pass or they get a discounted, the, the value of it is less to be able to build it. So in general, that's, the would consider, I think, is, is right on point. It actually helps us to be able to look at it, and what you would be saying is bring us our, bring us the best management practices, and we're willing to consider. I, I think that's on point.
Can, I, I just have a comment. Instead of would consider, what do you think about the city of Burbank considers? Because would consider, sounds like maybe we will, maybe we won't, but considers...
That's what we're saying.
That's what we're saying.
I mean, you consider it, but you consider no, you know, or can you consider yes? So that's...
We can't. We're spent it to death.
Yeah.
My point is, we would consider it.
Right.
I like would consider because it'll still be project-by-project, depending what's being proposed. Especially if there's a retail component or art gallery.
Right. I think it says the same thing. It's like, we consider it every time. You know, we consider it, and maybe we'll do it, and maybe we won't. But I don't know if the would is...
Local control?
Yeah, that's local control. Would consider.
I think the point that Mr. Ramirez makes is that staff would always evaluate, if somebody wanted to do less parking, then they would evaluate the location, what's requested, whether there's shared use possible, you know, shared use, if there's unused hotel parking spots, and there's a way of sharing all that use, that the developer, the applicant would have to show and demonstrate to us that they can make that work. And it, you know, it's, I think would consider covers that step of proof that, that we would want to see.
Okay. Would consider.
And I think it's important that we move in this direction. Just like we talked about the Front Street project being across from, across from MetroLink. So it doesn't mean if it's a half a mile away, it should be, but it gives our staff and our consideration of legislation a little more nuanced opportunity in terms of where we come out and support.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Continue, please.
So we'll move on to F, which is the sixth policy, policy statement we have proposed for tonight, and that is, "The city of Burbank supports sensible SEQA reform that will enable new housing production. Local jurisdictions are asked to continue to make statements of overriding consideration when approving various projects, including multifamily and affordable housing projects that will result in significant adverse impacts that can still be susceptible to frivolous lawsuits and untimely delays. If the state is serious about increasing housing supply, then SB 50-type housing bills that propose buy-right housing development should include sensible SEQA reform that streamlines the environmental review process and broadens the existing infill exemption."
Comments? Yes, Councilmember Talamontes. Excuse me, Murphy.
Okay. For the folks at home, would you say what SEQA is instead of SEQA?
Sure. It's the California Environmental Quality Act. For, for us in the state of California, it is the, the law that requires us to assess any new development, assess the potential environmental impacts that that project could result in. And what that means is that as a project comes forward, we look at it, we determine whether it's either exempt based on some requirement within the law, or whether we have to do a higher level of review. And in the highest level of review, which is the one that people have probably seen on TV in front of the council, is what's called an environmental impact report. And in the case of 77 Front Street, you adopted that particular project's EIR, you certified it, and you also included a statement of overriding consideration, which said, "All the benefits of the project far outweighed the impacts that were associated with it." What, what you're, what the policy's saying here is, to take it one step further, is if we locally have to do that, why does the state get a pass when they propose wholesale changes for the sake of housing production, but they don't address the issue of the SEQA, the SEQA issue that we have to then deal with? But they'll be willing to exempt SoFi Stadium in Inglewood or the Oracle Arena on a, you know, basically on a request, and here the cities are stuck with all the nuances of, dealing with housing production and the associated environmental impacts. I think that's what we're, if the council so agrees, the policy would say, make and align the environmental review with that issue of statewide concern.
Thank you, Councilmember Talamontes.
I just have a question in regards to referring to SB 50 in this.
Why do we, why do we say that?
Yeah. I know we're trying to make it a connection.
So the, the connection...
Because the new, the new bill's going to be SB 902.
Sure. I, I think you can, you could, we could call it whatever. I think at the time when we wrote it...
Right. Sure. I understand.
We, we were under the impression that any bill that has that magnitude of basically taking local control and for the sake of housing production should also address that other issue that we locally, once the project comes into our review, our 60-day review, that, that they also address the SEQA issue, which is something that the city's going to be stuck with having to address as the lead agency locally.
So I, I also, just to add to that, we put in, we didn't put it in the policy, but we're saying those types SB 50-type bills, because I think everybody understands what SB 50 is at this point. Most, I know all the city council does.
Sure. That's fine.
Okay. Because it's not in the policy statement.
No, it's not, but it's in...
Okay.
Okay. So then we'll move on to G, which is the seventh policy statement, and staff proposes the following. "The city of Burbank opposes rent control as a solution to addressing housing affordability because it only masks the larger problem of facilitating more housing production, which leads to greater choice competition and affordability. However, the city does support current rules regarding relocation costs developed under Assembly Bill 1482 guidelines. The city supports greater flexibility for cities to produce housing affordability to all residents in the community, including much-needed workforce housing that includes above-moderate income housing, but also seeks state funding to support these mandates that facilitate mixed-use income housing projects. The city of Burbank supports reasonable relocation assistance to tenants displaced by new development and possible first options to rent and/or buy house, housing, subsequently develop, develop dwelling units at the developed sites."
Comments? Okay.
Yeah, this is the only one that I had a concern about. I would propose that we change the sentence to be, "The city of Burbank opposes rent control as the sole solution to addressing housing affordability." I think anything else is a slap in the face. Sorry? I think anything else is a slap in the face of the state, number one, and it's also going to further fuel, you know, rent control, tenant rights, things that think that, you know, we don't think they count, and we do.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Here again is the question about the bill being part of the... Bills change and bills, new bills are introduced, so maybe we should just stay away from mentioning the bill itself that does support current rules regarding relocation cost, period.
Period.
I mean, because it's a state law.
Yeah, it is.
It's a state law, so we're going to have to abide by, whether you refer to the bill or not, you have to abide by it. And my, my concern is that, you know, when you start putting dates or names of certain people in certain things, you have to come back and we've got to change the name.
We're more than happy to make that change. Just remember that every year, we bring back the legislative platform to you and that you have the opportunity to make changes every single time. So tonight's meeting, and I know, do you want to talk, Amy?
No. No. Yep. If I could just chime in, so, so, so whatever you approve tonight, as far as the policy statements, we will incorporate this into our draft legislative platform that, that we're going to bring back actually next week. So, and then we adopt it, and as you know, we bring back our legislative platform every year, and at that point, you know, if this changed or, I, I'm, I like actually not having the, the numbers in there, but obviously, if we wanted to leave it in there, we would update it every year. So it's not, it's not 1993 since we updated it. It will be every, every year.
What I find happens with the use of ABs is, after a while, you forget. I mean, some people, AB 1600, everybody says that, it's the Mitigation Fee Act, but people that aren't familiar and weren't around in 1993 might not know what it is. But what I would suggest is that we actually cite the, the statute because we supported that relocation as developed there. You might not support, in general, a relocation by the state that takes away your local control, doesn't fit the circumstances here. So I would suggest that we just put in the actual statute. So we'll, you know, look at the government code section that it amended or whatever section and put that section in so it's really clear. And that's, that would just be my suggestion and maybe... Okay? Yep?
I, I just have a question or a comment. So the Councilmember Murphy said, "The city of Burbank opposes rent control as a sole, to add sole solution."
As the sole.
So we're taking, the part of it that we support is the relocation, right? Because, right?
So we're saying, the way I have it written, and I want to make one suggestion, is we have, "The city of Burbank opposes rent control as the sole solution to address housing affordability because it masks a larger problem of facilitating more housing production, which leads to a greater choice competition and affordability." So that's the first part. And then the second part is, however, the city does not support current... Does support, sorry, does support current, and we'd like to recommend maybe state rules regarding relocation cost, and then we would add the statute at the bottom.
For the government code?
Okay. I'll just, I'll find the right section. Okay.
So...
You have to put the year and two in case it gets amended?
Is it...
Is it this year? So, and, you know, that's why we're saying you can change it next year if it changes, and you're not in support of that anymore.
So I actually oppose rent control. I think it's just detrimental, but I support the relocation, so.
That's what this sentence is saying, that we've- The second part says, "We support the relocation cost." The first part says, "We oppose rent control as the sole solution." So if you look at the second sentence, it says, "However, the city does support current," and we would add state rules regarding relocation.
Right.
Does that make sense?
But it changes the policy statement. Right. So I guess what I'm concerned about is that, you know, there will be rent control, but all these other jillion housing bills that are coming, and there is a more restrictive rent control that I think will be on the ballot in November. So. Go ahead.
I think Councilmember Murphy's proposal is a good refinement of this, because our position is, we oppose rent control as the sole solution.
Right. The only thing I support about rent control is the relocation fee.
Right, and when we say, "We support the relocation fee that the state has put in place."
Okay.
You won't call for any vote until there's-
Right, right, right. Okay.
We can call afterwards. Okay, so let's move on to the eighth. Building and improving public transit system, local infrastructure, and associated public services that ensure improved reliability, increased level of service, and enhanced public safety are imperative near new housing developments. Infrastructure funding for upgrades encourages individuals and future tenants of these projects to use public transit to forego single occupancy vehicles. Cities like Burbank that are adding housing near transit should be supported by the state with additional infrastructure funding to offset the impacts from hurried growth. For this reason, the eighth policy statement reads, "The City of Burbank supports and highly encourages state funding that links the development of housing, which with improved public transportation, I'm sorry, public transit system, local infrastructure, and associated public service."
Comments? Okay. Please continue.
Okay, we're on I. The ninth policy statement reads, "The City of Burbank supports new housing, but opposes unrealistic timeframes for the processing of larger housing development projects that may result from new legislation." So Burbank and the state agree that housing production and affordability are shared issues of concern, which require ongoing dialogue and collaboration between the state and the city. However, the city opposes a one-size-fits-all approach to facilitating housing production at the expense of local control and potential impacts to local infrastructure and neighborhoods. Burbank, like other cities throughout the state, are already required to process projects such as ADU applications within 60 days, and pending legislation may require a similar 60-day review window for larger housing projects. This will result in a very cursory evaluation, and there will not be time to adequately assess the potential impacts on local infrastructure and public services to support the new housing.
Good. Okay.
We're whipping through. Okay, J. For our 10th policy statement, we note that Burbank supports redevelopment 2.0 legislation. This shows that the city supports new state legislation that increases incentives for local municipalities to leverage local infrastructure funds with tax increment to build out infrastructure in support of affordable housing while removing the red tape associated with community reinvestment agencies, known as CRIAs, and enhanced infrastructure financing districts, known as EIFDs. Two, that to date, that have, I'm sorry, that have resulted in very few cities taking advantage of these tools. Senator Portantino mentioned that he has a new bill to replace SB 5 that was approved by the legislature last year but vetoed by the governor, stating that this type of program should be considered within the budget. Senator Portantino's new bill is SB 795. Good?
Good. Yes, Councilmember Talamontes.
The reference of last year, should we specify the year? And I know we're coming back a year from now, where you see, you mentioned, oh, that's not in our statement.
It's not in the statement.
It's just in the-
It's just in my conversation afterwards.
Reference material?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, the last policy, proposed policy statement for city council consideration is probably one that might be pertinent to all types of bills, not just housing legislation. For this reason, you might wanna include it with the overall policy platform. It reads, "The City of Burbank seeks a seat at the table with state legislature and the federal government. Burbank wants to work together with our elected officials at all levels of government to proactively formulate new legislation before their introduction and during the committee review process to address issues of statewide and national concern that are broad-based to garner shared support and tailored enough to deal with the unique economic and physical changes that may vary from community to community and affect Burbank. We would do this by continuing to be involved in groups that represent a number of entities such as the League of California Cities and providing input regarding specifically the City of Burbank. In this way, the city and the state can work together to build a beautiful, safe, and thriving community."
Good. Okay.
Good. Okay, that is all of our policy statements. At this point, I like, it's been a long process, and if you have questions regarding the bill, the attachment that was amended, number one, in your pamphlet, if you have any questions, we can note those questions, and we can either answer them now, or we can bring back the answers later.
Do we have comment cards?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. There's not. Oh, there's, okay, no additional comment, or?
If there's no questions, I can go over the changes that we recommended one last time.
No, I think we got it.
Okay, you're good.
So I, we need a motion, and I just, right, I just, on item G, I made my thoughts about that clear, and so, but everything else is fine with me.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the policy statements that would be integrated into our legislative platform and shared with our locally elected state and federal officials. Oh, shoot. Sorry. I, so I'll do it again. Move that we adopt the policy statements that would be integrated into our legislative platform and shared with our locally elected state and federal officials.
As amended by you tonight.
Second. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a question in regards to your hesitation for G. I know you, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Yeah.
I know you mentioned you're opposed to rent control.
Right. I support affordable housing, and I support direct subsidies. I just don't support rent control. I support the relocation fee.
By reading G, isn't that, doesn't that suffice, opposing rent control?
Right, but we added sole, as a sole solution. And so it's, what I'm concerned about is that it's not going to be the sole solution, because there will be all of these other housing bills that will come out of Sacramento. So I, that's why. I oppose it.
If that, the sole hadn't been added, you'd been okay with it.
Right. Because I feel like it's a disincentive for housing construction, rent control. But I support the relocation, and I support affordable housing and incentives to build it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Gableletti?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Did you wanna, are you voting?
This is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Who would like to start? Okay. Councilmember Gableletti?
Yeah, Gableletti.
Gableletti.
Like Clark Gable. I was on the call last week with the LA County Division Board of Directors and Legislative Committee conference call. We talked about the amending bill that Ting is taking through to clear up AB 68 and the other two ADU bills that went through Sacramento and were adopted last year. I think that's already been covered in greater detail because of Jones and Emanuel coming to us this evening and going over that very thing. There are, as you know, a variety of housing bills on the horizon. We did not delve into any of them. We did say that we wanted to, the league would, the Southern, the LA County Chapter would push an additional amendment to the cleanup bill of AB 68. That's why I asked tonight, how, you know, when it's a cleanup bill, do you, when it's tweaks, can you change substance? And I guess we'll see. What the conference call resulted in was a letter that would ask for restoration of owner occupancy and address the FAR. And Mr. Talamontes and I met as part of the ad hoc subcommittee on ADUs. We met with staff, and then on Saturday, I participated in, I don't know if anyone else did. I listened in on the Livable California SB 50 telecon, which had almost 100 people again, and people from Northern California, Central California, and Southern California. So the discussion was, you know, some of it was focused on, well, what are we, what's our response going to be? And what are other counties doing? I'd like to tell the city attorney that apparently the City of Alameda has a density cap, and that their RENA number takes them over that density cap. So they are unsure what they're going to do with that. So it had, the great benefit of being on these calls is to really hear the perspective of people from other parts of the state and what is going on with them. So there's been, I think, a great growth in the coalition. I don't know, Vice Mayor Frutos, if you wanna add anything at this time. That was basically it for the week. And Vice Mayor Frutos, do you have anything to add about the call?
Yes. It's interesting, because the same frustration that our residents are feeling with some of these by-right projects, Six and Cedar, we got one on San Fernando and Cedar coming in, it's just not unique to Burbank. This is across the state. And Senator Weiner and Senator from Bloomingfield, from Santa Monica? Was that the one? Bloom. Thank you. I'm thinking of the council member. And how kind of they're supportive of each other, and the amount of, basically, power he has up there. Most of, most of his bills that he's proposing to move forward, it doesn't really help out the people that the local cities want to help out, and those are people that really need low-cost housing. And it really comes down to, from listening to the phone call, is, it just comes down to a developer's free-for-all out there, because these projects that are moving in by right are still not affordable to the average, you know, person that needs a place to stay. So that came out across the state.
And if I may-
Please, join in.
Add to that, that was absolutely right. That has been true, that there's no real, meaningful, affordable housing component in any of these recent bills, particularly SB 50.
And another thing I got out of the phone call, listening, was that this governor isn't really, how would I say? He's putting the bigger demands on the bigger cities, LA, which we're a part of, that region, San Diego, and Oakland, San Francisco, San Jose, but some of the, you know, Riverside, San Bernardino counties that can put more housing out there, low-cost housing, he's not really putting that kind of pressure like he is with job-rich cities like Burbank. And so a lot of that came out, but it was really good, and I agree with Councilmember Gableletti, that the coalition of other elected officials on that phone call is that we're all sharing the same struggles and the same impacts of losing local control, and all smaller cities, their electives are getting the same pushback that we're getting from our residents, and they want us to speak up and stand up, and the coalition is working towards that. But what I really liked about the conversation is all the different ideas, including pressuring Sacramento, our legislators, to, hey, you want all this housing? Then you know what? Give us the funding, so we can work with developers and build projects that we know we need in our community and where they should go. So it was a very powerful, long conversation on the telecom, so I really appreciated that. Going back to Wednesday, the 29th, I attended a grand opening of a new restaurant that opened up on Victory called Antojitos. And then on Thursday, January the 30th, I attended the Boys and Girls Club. They were having a 25-years-of-service event, and I obviously attended the phone call on Saturday. Then I also attended, which I wanna report back to the council, I attended the Burbank Sustainable Commission, and I know that they were gonna be requesting for Mr. Ramirez to attend a future meeting to discuss the greenhouse gases reduction for our city. And I asked Mr. City Manager on that moment in time when Mr. Ramirez attends that meeting, if we can also have the management analyst assigned to the city manager's office to attend that meeting, 'cause I know there's gonna be some type of follow-up, but the commission would like to meet whoever the management analyst that's gonna be working on with Mr. Ramirez on the greenhouse reduction. I know it's gonna be coming forward, but the commission definitely is looking forward to seeing Mr. Ramirez, and hopefully whoever the management analyst that will coordinate the city, you know, with greenhouse reductions. And that's all I have to report. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the Boys and Girls Club of Burbank in Greater East Valley. Their 25-years-of-service event, that was very well-attended. And like my colleague, Councilmember Gableletti, mentioned, that we did a, we did have an ADU subcommittee meeting with staff. Let's see what else. On Monday, yesterday, I attended the Metro Northern Corridor Cities Meeting that was hosted by Santa Clarita, and the chair of that is Mayor Najarian from Glendale. He chairs, is a member of the Board of Metro. And today, I attempted to participate in a webinar that was put on by the League of California Cities Board of Directors. They did an audit, and they're going to some rebranding. They're gonna do some rebranding for the League of California Cities. So we wanna present it to the board, and then it's gonna go to, I think, in general for a vote, see what you like or dislike. So some changes are coming for the league. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
I was at the Boys and Girls Club event. It was a good time, and I'm pleased to announce that they're now serving between 4,000 and 4,500 kids. It's really incredible when you think about it. I attended the BHRC meeting last night, where they invited Matt Hill to come and talk about any issues with regard to the school board- regard to the school board and the, uh, school system, and it was very informative. Um, he's a bright guy with a lot of, uh, IDs, ideas and energy, and it was, uh, it was very well attended. Uh, I also, uh, helped, uh, Bob, uh, open up the, uh, Mexican restaurant on Victory and Tojitos. Really nice family, uh, really nice people, they're excited to be here, and good food. I, uh, s, stayed for a sample. I would recommend it.
Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos.
I do wanna add that, you just reminded me, the owners, the parents and the daughter, the daughter is an adult, married, they're Burbank residents, but they went through a RISE program. Just wanted to say that.
Nice.
Sure, thank you. Um, on January thirtieth, I was principal for a day at the Burbank Community Day School, so it was kind of a homecoming for me since I volunteered there, um, uh, starting about ten years ago, and then kind of intermittently, um, since that time. And then on the thirty-first, um, with Vice Mayor Frutos, we were at Romancing the Bean and discussed the possibility of a P-bid, uh, moving forward, so we may, we will likely come back with a additional agenda item for that sometime soon. Okay, that wraps it up. So this is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce?
I've got something I wanna talk about. I'm not sure it's an agenda item, but maybe a report. Uh, the last couple of days, there's been a nightmare of traffic on, um, Alameda and Olive, and, um, um, people, I mean, my phone lit up with calls, uh, people complaining that they sat there for twenty minutes, a half hour, and didn't move. Apparently, uh, it was city workers, I guess, changing power lines.
We'll provide a report. I'm not too certain about what happened, but we'll get back to you.
What I really was thinking about is maybe if we know we're gonna do some kind of work, having some kind of heads up, so people will avoid that? Is that possible on our website?
We try to do that, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Well, it's not a new idea then. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we now adjourn to Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty, at six PM in the council chamber, two seventy-five East Olive Avenue, second floor for a regular meeting.